Everyone get a sandwich and hopefully, yep. So, thank you for coming back after last night and after a couple of months ago. Just a couple of housekeeping things. So, these black little boxes are microphones. You don't need to touch them. They're on and they're recording pretty well within a couple of feet. But if you're, if you're one of the people in the middle like John, you might want to use the microphone if you're talking a lot.
We know he will be.
Yeah. Just give him one now. But with that, just wanted to say thank you to Marin and Dean for all the work they've done on getting the budget to this point. There's been a lot of conversations that have happened over the last couple of months with some of the feedback we've received and just kind of it's numbers have come in. So, I guess when I just go to the slide, Marin? So, today's schedule, we're gonna, this is the first of at least two work sessions we're gonna do. Next we're doing on April 25th in a couple of weeks. Today, we're gonna focus mostly on the general fund and then we'll save the enterprise funds for April 25th. And then, I guess, real quick backup.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just as you've all been through this process before, we'll adopt the tentative budget by the second meeting of May and then public hearing, first meeting of June. And then, if we do a truth in taxation, that final budget wouldn't be adopted until August, of course, so otherwise. We always fly through this slide, but our mission statement with the budget or just our city's mission statement, I think there's, there was been a lot of, not to get too philosophical, but I think these words were chosen very carefully. And if you look at that, it just makes me think, we've really tried hard to stick with this mission to look at our present, but also the future needs. I think we've done an especially good job this year with that as we've looked out and projected costs for, you know, power and water, things like that, and what it's gonna take to make sure we're set up well for the future. At the same time, there's this sort of like tug of war, sometimes I feel like where we're looking at the current, you know, budget and thinking, all right, how do we balance this? And how do we maybe defer some things and, and then, you know, not put too much burden on the residents, but at the same time, make sure we're taken care of for the future. So, I think that really comes into play. And then, of course, our whole goal is to just make life better in Kaysville and we do that by providing effective and efficient services.
Thanks for not saying equitable.
Sorry?
Thanks for not saying equitable.
Yeah, the, we'll, we'll exit out sometime.
If I'm on the record, I'd hope saying I don't like that.
I think when that was written, that, that political baggage probably was not, not even there, right? But, I think it's a different meaning than that. Budget objectives, of course, the three areas we're looking at, operations, employees, and capital. And we're going to spend a little time in all three of those areas today, so next slide. And again, today's schedule, mostly the general fund and we'll talk about, we're gonna start with kind of the bottom line up front, which I think was appreciated last year. We'll focus more on, you know, right off, what are we gonna do to, to balance this budget? And we'll, one of the big parts of this, of course, is our personnel. Most of our operating costs are personnel, your service organization. So, health insurance and compensation are a huge part of what we do, our, our budget. And then, again, April 25th will be the next work session. We'll get into the enterprise funds. So, with that, get right into the bottom line up front, more or less, that's what this is. So, this is our general fund. As you can see, kind of, the takeaway from this slide, I think, is number one, we've had some pretty flat revenues projections. If you look at the first line there, taxes, only seeing a, projecting right now with the information we have, about a $212,000 in increased revenue. So, from going from 16.6 to 16.9 million, pretty flat. And then, you know, you look at other, some of those other categories like licenses, permits, that's building permits included, we're actually seeing a significant decrease in, in some of those revenues. So, that, that just makes it an extra challenging year for us on top of seeing a lot of cost increases in virtually everything we do. So, our, our process over the last several weeks has been to look at this. We initially started in the general fund with close to a $3.8 million gap between what we were projecting and what we were seeing in terms of, of costs, revenue projections and expenditure requests. And so, to narrow that gap, to close that gap of 3.8 million, we've done a couple of things. The first thing in red there, you see the truth in taxation, to, to close that gap of 3.8 million, 1.4 million of that would be a, a truth in taxation tax increase if, if, if we were to follow through with that. And we'll get into that in a little minute, in a few minutes. The other parts of that is to, to look at how, what can we defer? And, yeah, as you might recall from the kickoff meeting we had several weeks ago, we had something like 13, 14 positions that have been asked, requested over the years. Of those, we asked this year to start catching up and we requested for four positions back in late January. After seeing these numbers, we realized, boy, that's gonna be really, really difficult to do, even with a sizable tax increase. And so, we have now taken that down to just one position this year as our request. And appreciate the department heads who've really come to the table and found ways to, to maybe push off a couple of things. And, and that's just really difficult, again, as we look at all the needs we have. But it's, it's kind of pain on all sides, I think, with maybe a little bit of a tax increase, with deferring several expenses requests. And some of these have been year after year requests that we continue to defer. And you'll see some of those as we get further into this. And maybe, of course, this is a work session, so we're looking for feedback from everybody. Maybe we make some changes here, what we want to defer or not defer. And then, the last part of that, sort of the three levers you can pull to close that gap is truth in taxation, deferrals, and then, of course, we can fund some things out of the fund balance. And right now, we're proposing to fund about $919,000 of that, that gap out of, out of fund balance. And we, we try to pick things that are, you know, not annual expenditures, right? We don't want to start relying on, on fund balance for things that we're seeing every year, every couple of years. But we've, we've picked a few things that we think we can pull out of fund balance and, and, and then, so again, this is just general fund, but we'll spend, the last part of that you can see is enterprise funded. We'll get into that again probably more next time. But we've also looked at some areas where we're gonna have to do some rate increases, we think, in order to make sure we're taken care of long-term in our enterprise funds specifically, water and power. But with that, I guess, next slide. So, again, this, we, we took 919,000, 9100 out of fund balance. And these are the projects specifically that, that we have selected to, to fund out of our reserves. Public Works vehicles, parks and rec truck, a pole camera. We think we'll get into these as we get more into the individual departments' budgets. So, next slide. All right, so if, if we did a truth in taxation of, of 1.4 million, that's a little over 26% increase. And we'll get into the next slide a little bit about what that actually means in terms of dollars for the average house. But if we did a, a truth in taxation in that amount, it would bump us up from about number 13 of 15 cities in Davis County to number nine of 15 cities in Davis in terms of our overall rate. Now, this assumes that none of these other cities are gonna, you know, do a truth in taxation as well, 'cause, and I'm sure some of them will every year that happens. But if, if everything held exactly the same and only Kaysville moved with this, this truth in taxation that's being proposed, we'd move up to number nine of the 15, so kind of closer to the middle of the pack. But again, in reality, that's probably not gonna be the case. If Fruit Heights or Farmington or North South Lake, Bountiful also do a truth in taxation, they might still bump ahead of us even with our own truth in taxation.
Jason, just real quick, sorry.
Yes.
On the, the truth in taxation, the 1473, will we be reviewing or is there any way to go? Is there a slide that shows what's making that deficit? I guess that front page, I just don't see where we get the total in the 1473, 630 over. You know what I mean?
I'm not sure. So, that's, there's, there's a, that slide doesn't probably really tell that story the right, I think, to answer your question.
Yeah, it's like added into the table, but it's like, you know, okay, we, and even in that situation where 1.6 million.
Right.
More than the year before, but we don't.
Right, yeah.
Know why. That, that's coming, is what.
Yeah, yeah, that, we're coming there for sure. This is just the revenues.
If you go to the last page of the three page that shows combined expenditures, and so you can see the expenditures that make up that 23996, 430, that would have to balance revenues too.
Thanks, Marin.
And that's just per department and we'll, we'll dive into it here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it makes more sense, 'cause I guess, I don't know, if, and this is fine how we have it here, but if that, if, if the truth in taxation number wasn't in there, then, then it would make more sense to get to the point, if we got to a point where it said we're over 1.4.
Yeah.
So, we can see like, okay, that's where that number's coming from and see where, which departments are where, how it comes to that total.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
No, good, good question. But does that in general make sense, everyone, and we have this 3.8 million or so gap and, and so, that's, that's how we're, we're kind of trying to close that with some of each of those areas. I should've said this at the beginning, but if anyone has questions, obviously, just jump in or obviously Marin and Dean or department heads, if you have things to jump in and comment on, feel free to. As we get into the department budgets as well, we'll turn time over to the department heads to talk about their own requests and.
Just, so where does it show the 3.8 million deficit?
It doesn't show because we started with 3.8 with all of the needs from all departments. And then, we met as a team and kind of deferred items, chose to use fund balance and the property tax.
So, is the true deficit really the 919,000 and the 1.4 million?
At this point that we're proposing, yes.
That's the true deficit?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll see on department slides, the items that we deferred. So, if there's anything there that you're like, well, I'm actually interested in that, let's explore, bring it back in, we can have that conversation. But just as staff and department heads, we kind of came together as a team deciding, okay, what's priorities?
And, and those deferrals too, I think you'll see that those, those weren't really, there wasn't really anything in this budget that's, I would say, is like just bluff or, I mean, these are all really important things and, and so, it's, I just want to recognize the departments again for coming up with ways to, to put things off. And this is, yeah, it's just, it's gonna be a little bit of a tough year. All right, let's, yeah, enterprise funds. So, again, we'll get into that next time more so, but you can see that our operating performance is, it's down in just about every enterprise fund. And then, this is the slide we talked about. So, in terms of, all right, if we did property tax increase of 26%, if you took the average median valued house in Kaysville of around 650,000, what would that mean in terms of annual property tax or monthly property tax increase? And it's, it's a little over, a little under $12 a month. Then, looking at everything, like I mentioned, got some rate increases coming, proposed for water and electric. And then, a lot of these other ones like sewer sanitation, those are just pass-throughs, of course, we just, we bill, but those are coming from outside entities, the sewer district and Robinson Waste. But with everything we're seeing right now, if, if these rate increases in, in truth in taxation happen, we'd be looking at a total increase on, of fees and rates and, and tax of $20.59 a month.
What was the average household use for this? Do you know the median price?
650,000.
That's good, thanks for using a realistic number.
650,000 in Kaysville's a realistic number?
Well, depending on property tax.
That's the average.
Average household or house value.
It's not the 60% value, the market, market value, okay.
460%.
All right, so any questions at this point? Did, anything, Dean or Marin, that you guys wanted to add so far?
No, I, I, I appreciate you guys because I, now, we understand the both of you.
Yep, Marin, and thanks for that great suggestion last year to kind of just start with, hey, what, what is it that we're looking at? So, that's kind of just, well, unfortunately, I saw my email, it was ill-timed maybe or maybe good, but I just kind of ripped that bandage off and so you knew this was coming. That, I promise that was not intended. We wanted to kind of give you some background before we got to that number. But that's, that's the, kind of ripping the bandage off of what we're looking at right now with how things are stacking up. And thus, now we can take the next couple of hours here and kind of dive into like, all right, what, how did we come up with this? And, and what specific things are we deferring and putting on the budget? So.
Great.
Yep. We'll start with admin and.
Yes, we'll start with admin. I, we decided to show this in two different ways. One, being with a bar graph, so each department will have the same few slides. So, for administration, you can see the operation costs are increasing and there's just a high level explanation of why. The next slide, we'll kind of dive into operations a little bit deeper, but this slide, we want to look at capital costs. And as noted previously, those arrows are implying that those items are being covered with fund balance. So, we had our fleet department request a Polartec AC testing machine. That'll just help them be able to do different tests in-house rather than having to outsource. And we have vehicle replacement increase with Public Works. I think they're buying a dump and splitting it with water and storm?
Correct.
Yes. And then, park, a new park service truck. So, in this next slide, these are the operating expenditures per department within admin. And I just wanted to call out, you know, the, the biggest hitters. So, that lobbyist contract that we've talked about, and this is taking into consideration the six-month split with Symphony Homes, correct? And then, the other six months, just Kaysville City. The three items in dark red are IT requests. So, then, there was a website update of $5,000 that was approved in fiscal year '25. That's rolling over into this year. Just with the fiber project and everything, we kind of ran out of time and resources to finish that in '25. File storage management, I know that that was requested last year. That is just, we see legal and police department needs of storage doubling each year. And so, our system is kind of running out of space. This solution will allow, will help to identify old files and archive things that are, you know, that have aged out. Otherwise, we'll just be paying for storage increases or we can pay for a solution like this. And then, another 15,000 was requested because there's just an increase in numbers of computers that our IT department is supporting. So, different equipment and supplies and time. We just need an increase there. And then, as you all know, it's an election year and so we received an estimate from the county for how much we can expect to spend there. Each slide will also show a deferred items box. So, for admin, we, our fleet department requested another service truck that we have decided to defer. And then, the Arctic Wolf was presented again, just a reminder that that is a protection against network, another layer of virus software. Or, yeah, 90K, we were told by Ryan, 90,000 is worst-case scenario. There was a data breach or whatever. Realistically, it's probably about half of that if everything goes smooth. But there, the state is still looking into that free option. And if that gets approved, let's say we decided to go forward with Arctic Wolf, we could always then switch to the state free option, but.
Hey, can I ask a question about election?
Yeah.
What, what if we didn't have a primary? Is that required? It is required to have a primary?
Yeah.
If you have so many candidates? Depends on the number of candidates.
Okay, I, I mean, it seems like you could cut the cost in half almost by not having.
I think the only way it wouldn't be is if we did root choice.
Yeah. Between everyone.
Right.
You could do like, you could do like a, instead of paying them, you could do like a honk and drive, like they just honked twice for.
That sounds like a COVID graduation.
Hey, that was, that was one prepared.
The lobbyist contract will hit there. Yes.
I thought John.
Oh, no, I just, you just look, I was looking for an easy, you know, how do you cut that in half? Okay.
It is, but thank you, that's what I was just, it's cold.
Hey.
I wasn't gonna say that.
I didn't turn it up, Mom.
I was just gonna say cold.
Great, any questions for admin slides? Okay, now, we're really excited to hear from our department heads, so, oh, just kidding, I have a few more, sorry. ARPA funds, just a quick high level, we'll talk about this more with water. There is a water project for fiscal year '26 that the 1.4 will be going to. So, this is just showing that that's gonna be spent there. Our MBA funds, we still have the police station in the city hall payments. That box down there shows the years that the, the last payment will be made for those.
So, so remind me, we retired this year, we retired Pioneer Park?
Yes.
Okay. And.
And a fire truck.
That's, okay.
But I think that was in the debt service. So, debt service, we see a new ambulance, which Chief can talk about on his slides. And then, we had a lawnmower that I think was new last year, but, and then, this is the new principal and interest for fiscal year '26. Great.
Okay, thank you. My costs are going up. I guess someone's gonna give me about 20,000 operating costs. And I'm also asking for, and this is the position that we're asking for as a city, is an assistant city attorney. Case load here continues to increase. Most cities have either contracted that out to a city prosecutor or they've hired somebody in-house. After we've invented this, we feel like it would be better to have somebody in-house, provide some redundancies for the department, provides for greater service. One of the things that we'd really like to do is have a fleet of counsel at our planning commission meetings. We feel like that would be a really big benefit to that, the planning commission and land use issues. And so, happy to answer your questions, but that's.
Nick, I have one question. I know we talked about hiring someone versus contracting that position and not having to pay benefits and into a pension plan.
Yeah.
Tell us, tell us about that.
Yeah, so, I think eventually the, the city will be able to size that to full-time employees as assistant city attorney and city attorney may need it and issue a paralegal.
I think that the, the real benefit that you have is you have greater ownership in the cases. A lot of it is intangibles that you can't quantify, but I think you have greater ownership in the cases. It would allow us as a city, I don't think this is something that we do in the next year or two, but it would allow us to prosecute our own Class A misdemeanors. And I think that's important because when you send your cases to the county, there is not a, I want to start this by saying, there's not a better county attorney's office in the state than Davis County Attorney's Office. They're phenomenal. But when, when Chief sends his Class A misdemeanors down to the county, they're looking at those Class A misdemeanors in comparison with first-degree felonies. And so, it's really nice if your city is prosecuting their own Class A misdemeanors. That's the highest level of misdemeanors because those become the city's most, the city prosecutor's office, they're the biggest cases that we handle. So, those cases, stalking, violations of protective order, a lot of domestic violence-type cases, they become really high priorities. I also think that by contracting, contracting the prosecution out, it, the police department loses a connection with, with the attorneys. I have police officers contact me on weekends. I'm happy to do this, but they contact me on weekends, they wander into my office, they ask me questions. When you've contracted that service out, it's not, I think they lose that connection and they're less likely to call and the city ends up sometimes with bigger legal issues.
Even if that contracted person sat in our offices here?
I think if you had, if you were paying that amount of money, it would be comparable to.
You think so?
Yeah, comparable to what you pay a full-time employee. Every, Farmington City, yeah, Farmington City has a contract with David Cole and he works at the Davis County Attorney's Office. I don't know that how often he's in the office at Farmington, if, if at all. West Bountiful City has a contract with people at the county attorney's office. Most of these are not full-time contracts, they're very part-time contracts.
Okay, thank you for researching that.
Questions on, do you know what those contract costs are for those cities?
Yes, we put this out for an RFP, this is about two years ago, and we got contract costs anywhere from about 50,000 to about 80,000.
And then, under this, it says the cost for this assistant city attorney is 135,000, but that's the net, that's not the gross. That doesn't include the benefits and everything?
No, that doesn't include benefits. What, what net means is we're getting rid of the part-time that he has.
And then, if you do, if you do hire an assistant city attorney, does that also mean that you're gonna want another secretarial staff or paralegal or whatever that goes with it?
No, candidly, I think that the office would then, I, I don't see that the city attorney's office, I don't, you know, the legislature does stuff all the time, but I don't see that the city attorney's office would grow at all, ever. Bountiful City has operated for like 20 years with two attorneys and a, and a support staff.
I guess my only question is, it sounds like it would be, contract would be at a savings of about 50,000.
Yeah, if you're looking at it just from a financial position, yes. But a contract, a contract position would not come to planning commission. They wouldn't prosecute A's, they wouldn't, there wouldn't be redundancy in the office, so, but yeah, for sure.
And I guess what I'm trying to figure out what the primary reason for this is, and it sounds to me like it's because you want a prosecutor, just somebody that does prosecuting, pretty much.
No, we would like, our, our prosecution caseload right now is about 3,500 cases. That's about double what every attorney, every other attorney in the county, their caseload is. So, you know, for example, Syracuse is a one attorney office, but they only prosecute about 1,800 cases. Clearfield is about where we're at, but they have two attorneys in the office. We would like to have, I would like to have an attorney in the office so that there's somebody that can answer land use questions, they can help with personnel issues. We'd like somebody that can do everything and we would split that prosecution. I would still prosecute some, I think that the assistant city attorney would probably become the lead prosecutor, but I would still be in court prosecuting. And they would also be able to help fill in at city council meeting, fill questions about policy issues, draft ordinances, everything.
So, why, why do you think that these other cities choose to contract and not have their own attorney?
I think you've hit the nail right on the head. I think that they've made a, a policy decision that they'd rather save, save the money.
I, I, I think on that vein, as, as somebody who's a significant draw on Nick's time and resources and Chelsea's time and resources. I, I, I think on that vein, as, as somebody who's a significant draw on Nick's time and resources and Chelsea's time and resources. The ability that I have of at the drop of a hat to be in contact with our attorney and can I come talk to you this afternoon? And we have frequently, you know, it's a dynamic and frequently changing situation with projects where we're trying to negotiate with property owners, where we have litigation going on with older projects or developments. Uh, and, and just from my perspective, recognizing the drain that, that I am, uh, but also the benefit that I get, having worked with Felshaw. Felshaw was phenomenal, uh, but, but seeing Nick's position come in-house, I, I think the question was similar of, you know, what are we paying for outside services like Felshaw King versus bringing somebody in-house, which I think was arguably more expensive. But the intangibles, uh, again, on my end, I've noticed are absolutely worth it, and that's incredibly helpful to me to, to have that kind of access, so.
And, and I guess what I'm trying to look at is, I, I look at this in steps. I have to say, instead of all at once, is it easier to say, let's go to contract on our prosecuting? And to me, that would free up a lot of Nick's time. And I'm just saying, is there, if there's places we need to look at things like this.
So when we put this out to bid, um, a year and a half or so ago. With the, uh, Davis, uh, judge came in to my office and said, hey, just want you to know my perspective on this, cause he sees both sides, right? He's got cities that he works with that have a contracted prosecutor and those that have an in-house and, um, it's like, he said really clearly, look, um, you get what you pay for. When you're dealing with a contracted prosecutor, um, they're getting paid, you know, uh, by the hour and they're, and. There, I think they're trying to get through it as quickly as, as possible, right? Or as opposed to somebody that's vested in-house. And I, and I think about all the work and all the resources that go in on the police side to bring these cases forward. And I've seen this in multiple cities, it's just been a consistent issue, and I've had, I've worked with, uh, contracted prosecutors in a couple of cities. And in both cases, the constant challenge there, and there is some savings, you're right. But on the other hand, if you look at it from just the amount of money we put in and resources again into the police side to bring these cases forward, and then to have them sort of quickly, you know, uh, dismissed or whatever, the, the prosecutor not fully, you know, invested in making sure that those get fully prosecuted and, and that the city's interests are represented. I think that's a huge investment on our side and on our police side to make sure that we're doing a good job with our cases. I'd also say, you know, uh, when we look at the, the difference in cost of saving in a, in a pro- contracted prosecutor. This person's gonna be doing more than just prosecution, they're gonna be there, like Nick said, sort of a redundancy to help with policy issues with, with civil cases. And there are a lot of times when we contract, um, some of that stuff out because Nick doesn't have the bandwidth just to be on top of things, you know, as, as things come up, so. This would just give us an opportunity to have to do less of that, um, and I think get some more savings than, than maybe just that fifty thousand. I think the difference might be a little bit less than fifty thousand because of some of that savings that we, we would see from time to time and not having to, uh, contract out some of this work.
So I, oh.
Oh, I was just saying this quickly.
You are the mayor. You interrupt me.
Well, yeah, I, John, John, um, as, as a company, so we do defense work, right? We do contracting for the federal government, and I do know that if it's not in our scope, if it's outside our scope of work at all, we don't do it or we do charge for it. So I do understand that, and I just wanted to also mention what you guys have already mentioned, but all of the other asks for employees and staff. The departments have agreed that this is the priority amongst all of the other asks, at least that's my understanding. And, and we've got some serious asks that we've received over and over year after year, and they're all in agreement that this is the most important position right now at this time for the city. And so as much as I'm in favor of contracting, I, it's what I do. Um, I, I understand the need for this, and I think it will also overall save us money in terms of litigation fees and lawsuits, right? So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, believe me, I've had lots of conversations too, this is what we do, and, and it's easy to find someone to, to plug into a seat. But if it's outside the scope at all, weekends, nights, it ends up costing a lot more than we initially think that we're seeing. At least that's our experience as someone who's in that industry, so.
You stole my wind.
Oh, really? Dang it!
Exactly what I was gonna say. No, part of what I was gonna say is this is like deja vu because I think Mayor, Mike, myself, we're in this room, how many years ago? Six?
Yeah.
Six years ago, doing like literally first budget meeting, and we were talking about hiring a city attorney. And it was a long, lengthy discussion where we talked about whether or not we should contract, continue to contract out. And I think it was a, it was a super tough decision because Mike made some really good points about costs, savings. And so I guess looking at it, had we gone down that road, I, I'm glad we didn't. Not just because you're so fun, but, but, I mean, many times I've been able to call and access Nick myself, and I'm not working all the time. You know, I'm not doing this stuff all the time, but I know that with Felshaw and those, that just wouldn't have been possible, so. I think the decision was correct then, and I think the decision's correct now, and specifically because of the backing of the rest of the department heads. Probably a good idea.
Well, we already, we already have our savings, and we dropped Lexi pole. I use Nick all the time, whether it's policies, discipline, whatever. And I'm, you know, we're a small department, so, you know, Lexi pole's twenty grand a year, so you can argue, we already saved the city a hundred and some thousand dollars. And then we just tap in the nick, so.
It's great.
You know, I think thirty-five hundred caseload speaks for itself.
Yeah, and I think if he, if the new guy is, is willing to like help us with some personal legal stuff as, or girl.
Mayor was all over that.
So sorry. The new person is willing to help with some personal legal stuff too as well, like on the side, I think that'd be helpful.
What did you just say?
I'm also one of those departments that has a high need for legal counsel and support, and, um, and this is not at all a negative on Nick and who he is. But candidly, a lot of the times I just can't get what I need. Um, he's in court, he's not here, he's in, you know, strapped in so many different directions. The planning commission would be great to have that support, there's been a number of times where questions come up and, and I do my best, but at the end of the day, I'm not legal counsel and I'm not comfortable giving legal guidance on things that especially I haven't had that experience before, um, or a similar experience to draw from. You know, there's development agreements, there's all sorts of legal things that come up with land use. Um, we have had a lot of issues recently with code enforcement cases that can't get resolved, business licenses that are operating illegally. And that's the type of stuff that also needs to go to Nick, and that is at the bottom of his priority list, which is fine. But that just means right now we have residents that are upset that these code enforcement cases aren't being resolved. And, you know, on, on the scheme of what's a priority, I think prosecuting something that comes out of the police department should come before anything that comes out of code enforcement. But that's not always how a resident feels, and so there is a, a, a large impact with the lack of, of bandwidth and therefore support that. You know, I think each of us as department head, heads have a need, and, and then, you know, if you do have a personnel issue, which I don't anticipate, but, you know, we've all had those and that's a, a whole nother realm of demand on Nick's time that we just don't have because those prosecution and those cases are, um, what's always coming first.
So what's the salary? Is it salary? I guess the, you're saying cost net, what is the sal- actual salary?
The proposed salary for the new position would be a hundred, uh, the range would be from eighty, from, excuse me, ninety-five to about a hundred and thirty. We anticipate hiring at about a hundred and fifteen, um, that's.
That doesn't include benefits or any.
No, Salt Lake City, Salt Lake City Prosecutor's Office has had an opening. For about two years, a constant opening, they'll hire as, an associate city prosecutor for a hundred and seventeen. So a hundred and fifteen is, I, I understand that's a big ask.
Oh.
It's a lot of cash.
Uh, not anymore.
But it's, it's the going rate for.
That's your bonus, right?
So, yeah, just.
Second bonus.
So benefits are about twenty-nine percent?
Thirty-four.
Twenty-eight, twenty?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent, so that would take that number, if you hired him at a hundred and seventeen or whatever, it's gonna take it to over a hundred and fifty then.
Yeah.
I think your investment is one seventy, and then the net amount is by reducing that current. Possession amount now, so it nets at a one thirty-five first year. That makes sense?
That's wages add benefits, dude.
Yeah, one seventy with benefits.
One seventy with benefits?
Yeah.
But then the fifty thousand savings.
The first year because we're reducing the, the current position we have now.
Oh.
The assistant city attorney.
Right now we have a part-time law clerk that screens cases and helps in court.
Oh, I didn't.
He's a law student, and we're, we're eliminating that posi- that part-time position, we're proposed to eliminate that part-time position.
So the actual cost, ongoing yearly cost is about a hundred and seventy thousand? Okay, that's the number I don't see here, the one I want, that's the number I wanted.
Providing the net number.
Okay, thank you.
Another question, Nick, in the department, as we talk about like efficiency as far as access, um, in your experience with contracted attorneys. Is there a lag or delay? I know we talked about the lack of, um, best interest to prosecute.
Yeah, I think there's, oh, go ahead, James.
I was just gonna say, the cops I have that'll be calling are, you know, they work all sorts of different days and nights, and a contracted attorney, like what Nick mentioned, Farmington's got. That attorney's got a full-time job already, and so he's very unavailable for those, you know, fifty hours a week probably. And so we're trying to get ahold of him outside of that work time, um, his normal work time, so I think there are significant challenges to that.
So if you were to reach out to that contracted attorney during the week, it'd probably be okay, but oftentimes you don't have lunch.
Well, and during, during, most of them are gonna work, you know, a, a day shift at their firm or their, wherever they're at. And so that time, they're, they're really inaccessible to us, and so we're trying to get ahold of.
Is that usually the case when we, we contract out, it's kind of a side gig?
Yeah, yeah.
When we put out the RFP, I think every, every person that applied for the RFP was employed at, uh, either Weaver County, Davis County, or a pro- similar prosecuting agency.
I mean, when I look at these numbers, the, the amount, the misdemeanor cases that we're handling, and I, my heart goes out to Nick. So I, I think that's a very strong case right there, but I would like to hear, like, if you give kind of another, an example of a hypothetical case. And how it would benefit to have the in-house person versus contract.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think in addition to what's been said, there's, there's, a contract position, uh, is always one that comes in and solves a, a specific problem and then leaves. And I think an in-house, that's compared with an in-house attorney who, I'm seeing trends, and so occasionally I'll call a lieutenant and I'll say, hey, this is the third or fourth case I've seen where Officer Jones is doing this, is this a training issue, what is this? Um, I come in and I do training on issues that I've, I've seen. I think a great example of a situation that ended really, really good for us, it was a low-level issue, but, uh, several months ago, we had a, a car that was damaged by a, an employee. And, um, the, uh, lieutenant was able to call me and I, he told me what happened, and we cut that person a three hundred, four hundred dollar check that day or a couple of days later and resolved that issue. As opposed to that becoming a claim that they filed with the city, now we've got outside counsel, now we're dealing with discovery type issues for a, a, a small claim, but it didn't, it didn't mushroom, it didn't balloon into anything that it wasn't. We were able to resolve that very quickly, that I think that's the kind of service that you don't get if you have a contract attorney. If you have a contract attorney, you're gonna make a call to the office, they're gonna take a message, they're going to prioritize that where, you know, if, if they say, oh, it's three hundred dollars in car damage. That's, that's gonna be at the bottom of their list, they're gonna call in two or three days, that resident's gonna be unhappy and it's gonna spread through the neighborhood potentially. And, and so I think you get quicker, better service in that.
And I think there's a cost savings there that's hard to quantify too, that would be placed on all the departments slowly over time, so I'm, I'm supportive.
I, yeah, I think you're exactly right, Councilman Jackson, I can't tell you how many times, and I'm always happy to do it, but I'll have a, a power employee wander into my office and say, hey, this is going on, what should we do? And we can get an answer to them or a power, of course, you know, whatever department, we can answer that question right away, um, and, and, and we get that resolved. And then also, I think, uh, with an in-house position, people are more likely to even come in. When you have a contract position, I think you're always kind of worried that, is this gonna be outside the scope, are they gonna bill me more for this? So you only bring things that are on fire to those contract people.
I also wondered too, with some of those cases like domestic violence cases that seem to be ongoing, and that when the police get a personal connection with those individuals, the family. That probably, I assume, helps to, when we prosecute in the long term, help of the victims and.
Yeah, trying to solve ongoing problems, actually solve them instead of just address the short-term issues.
So, I, I, I really appreciate what the city has done. Uh, you know, this is something put off for a number of years, I mean, but I, I really appreciate the staff, as you guys have looked, cause I know you each have needs. Saying this is really what will make our lives better and easier as a city. And, um, our responsibility in living in Kaysville is, Kaysvilleites expect a certain level of service. And I get the impression that there's a lot of cases where we're at the point where we can't provide that because we don't have something like this. And, uh, I appreciate the sign of advice over the last number of years, and there's a time, um, where you just have to say, okay, we gotta buy coal. And I think that's where we're at, my, my perspective. And it's a big ask, you know, when you're looking at the money, I, yeah, I wasn't done, but I, I, I was done, but I knew you were gonna stop, so I wanted to talk, yeah, so I wanna talk more.
Grass, yeah.
I did not.
Okay, um, I think, uh, my, I'm, I'm, I think generally comfortable with hiring an in-house city attorney, but I did kind of have a question just for my own vetting of this process. And which is, um, is it possible, like, we talk about having someone who's accessible, but if Nick's already accessible, could we give the other person the stuff that's taking his time? And have Nick be the accessible one and a contractor be the less accessible one? I mean, I don't know if that's even possible, like, are there cases or whatever that, that don't need a lot of likes, hands-on, that would take enough load off to where we could keep going? I mean, like I said, I'm already mostly comfortable, but I kinda wanted to see.
Yeah, so that's certainly, uh, possible, I think that the cost savings e- e- end up getting eaten out, like, that eats up most of the cost savings because by the time you contract for a prosecutor and then you end up contracting for some, like, we would need two separate contracts if we wanted somebody at planning commission, which I think is a really valuable, uh, potential and would save us a lot of potential land use issues. By the time you contract for those positions, I mean, the prosecutor alone is probably gonna be about sixty thousand dollars to prosecute, to, excuse me, to contract for this. The planning commission coverage and the other things, I think, I think at that point you're looking at sixes and with co- roughly sixes. And with a contract position, you're not, you're not getting a lot of those intangibles.
Thank you.
Mind a community development?
Okay.
I think we should ask Nick a few more questions, actually, it doesn't feel like he got enough.
Oh, I don't wish to.
I don't even wanna get to my slide.
You're making us go. Well, you're welcome, because I'm not asking for any staff, except for assistant city attorney. So I did have, I did have two budget requests. This two hundred thousand is the same as what we requested last year for a comprehensive code update for our land use code. It's in so many ways woefully inadequate. It's in so many ways woefully inadequate. We lack definitions. That makes it difficult for us to make land use determinations. The best way to do a comprehensive code update is to have someone come in and do that work. It's very intensive. And I mean, this is something that probably would take a year with a consultant working on it. Obviously, all of that has to go to Planning Commission, public hearings, city council. We definitely might, with the planning and zoning side, we're better off than I think we ever have been in the past, but it's still, you know, we are barely keeping our heads above water most of the time. And so we can try and chip away at some of this as opportunities arise, but from a practical standpoint, we're very busy on a day-to-day basis, answering calls at the counter, processing applications, code enforcement cases take up a huge amount of time. I mean, I, I would estimate honestly, over the next six months, at least half of Ann's time will be spent working on code enforcement cases. And so processing a large-scale project like that just really is not practical. And there's, you know, there's detriments to not having that done. We can continue to proceed with the code that we have and, you know, we'll get the same type of results. And, and I'm not saying that what we have is a negative, but it could be better. So the other thing I feel strongly that we need to do, I think our business license fees are low, and I think there's an opportunity here for us to look at what fees we charge and come to the council and say, this is how much we think that business license fees should be, this is how much we're charging. Do you wanna continue to have the general fund subsidize these business license fees or do you wanna raise the fees? The, I've spoken to a few other communities out there that have done a business license fee study, eighteen thousand dollars would do that study. May be a little less, I wouldn't anticipate that it would be much more than that, but what we'd like to do is look at the comprehensive, like, from start to finish, how much our software costs, how much of my time, how much of Mindy's time, how much of Nick's time do we have to pull in? We have fire inspections, are we charging adequately for those fire inspections? Chief is shaking his head, we are not.
We are not.
We should be including in those our vehicles, the cost of vehicles, right? So that every aspect of what goes into business licensing from start to finish is included in those fees. And I think we're undercharging. Then that means taxpayers are subsidizing that. So there is, I think, an opportunity with some of the staffing we will have over the next couple of months with Dean still being here, Marin being here, and Marin's replacement, AKA Dean's replacement coming on, that maybe we could look at that internally. It's definitely not something that I have the capacity or bandwidth to take on, but I would easily see, you know, that eighteen thousand dollars being recouped within a couple of years with charging those business license fees adequately. So I think right now, what we're suggesting is that we complete that internally. And hopefully, that's something that she feels like we could accomplish in the next couple of months. The other thing, so we do have a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the State Division of Drinking Water, or Division of Water, to do the general plan update that's required, that has to be in place by December of this year. And so that fifteen thousand, that's, that'll be money, revenues that comes in. Actually, is it a reimbursement grant? Now, I don't know. Or do they just pay us? I think we, I think we pay and they reimburse us. But I, I would also anticipate that fifteen thousand may not cover everything that we need, because we're gonna have to have water modeling done, we're gonna have to do a lot of interfacing with the consultants with irrigation, with Weaver Basin. So that's kind of an unknown at this point. But I think we're anticipating total that may cost twenty thousand, and the grant will cover the fifteen thousand.
Oh. I was just gonna say, I have a question for you. So in terms of the land use ordinance update, could the attorney that we hire have a specialty in, in land use and be used in that way, in a, you know?
Yeah.
On, on the option, and also, Will, I know, Planning Commissioner Will has looked at our ordinances and has gone through them, could we, I'm just wondering if, if we can make that number smaller by cross, cross-applying, cross utilizing some of the talent that we have?
I, I think that's a potential. The way that I've seen this done in a lot of other municipalities and the way I've heard it done is, it is like, to coordinate the legislative updates that are happening, the internal policy decisions that the city wants to make, and then to synphonize all that, I just think I made that word up. Yeah, there you go, synphonize. To do all that, to harmonize, that's the word. To harmonize all that together is, is like really challenging. And again, I, I think this is a, kind of a flip of what we were just talking about. There are people that do this, and they do it all over the state, and they're really good at it. And this is a situation where I think contracting is the better option, because they know what's happened in Logan and St. George.
You know, high school, they know.
They know how these things have been interpreted, and they can give us that perspective on how this other entities in the state are running.
Well, so, so Will, I know he was doing it for us for free, looking at it, could we pay him significantly less than happened? Because he is in the legislative space, he is in the planning space, he's a discretionary planner, he's on our commission. Someone might like him, could we do it for cheaper? I guess is what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, I, sure, if you, if you carve this up, right, like, I could see just redoing our sign code being twenty thousand dollars. So, you know, again, I, I think the best approach is to do comprehensive code update. We can still chip away. We have Will on the Planning Commission, I think if he were to be a paid employee, he probably would have to remove himself of the Planning Commission, or at least that would be probably some type of conflict, that he wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, could I be a consultant?
What was that?
As a consultant, I, I mean, I, I would think maybe that would probably be okay, but I don't know legally, so.
Oh, excuse me.
Are you just talking about the twenty grand or?
I'm talking about the two-hundred thousand.
Oh, the two-hundred?
Yeah, just because, I mean, it would be nice to just hire someone and throw money, we just, you know, as a council, we hate these, we hate studies. If we can avoid them, it seems like a lot of money that maybe could be spent in a different way. Maybe we could reduce the fee, I'm just asking.
We'd do it for half, right?
I would do it for half. I mean, this is something that's optional, we don't have to do it.
You're deferring it this year, though? Is that why it's on the deferred file?
Yeah, deferred.
I mean, of course we need, I'm just, you know, that's where we're, we're conversations about it.
Well, could you explain the process a little more about the comprehensive study? Because when I see that, I'm, my first thought is, okay, is some authority gonna just kind of take the, the average and throw it in and give us codes and things that we don't really want?
No, no, it would be a very interactive process, right? It would be reviewing our code for deficiencies, like I said, there's, I mean, Ann has been tracking a list of all of the missing definitions, but then you gotta go research. How does that definition fit into our code? Does this particular definition work? Does this definition screw up something else? It's very technical, very complicated process, so.
Does any of that come to the council during the process if there are?
I, well.
Tasks or wishes to change, fundamentally change certain?
It, it could, but the, the way that normally would work, right, is that staff and the consultant would work together to get that to a, a place where it's, I, I think, a workable ordinance that would be supportable. We take it to Planning Commission, the normal land use, the normal land use process would apply. Perhaps if some, if there's a larger thing, you know, like the sign code, right, that might, we might wanna have more input from the council upfront before we start drafting and taking it to public hearing or finalizing drafting. But, you know, th- this is, this is the type of thing that in an ideal world, this would, is what we would do. Even just, you know, the work that we put in to research the farm animal text amendment that just came through, right? Like, that's a substantial amount of research. We have to go, you know, like, I don't know the difference between a donkey and a horse and the size and, you know, all of that, like, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of research and work. And, and, and we fit that in as we can, but it's a very muted process, it's a very limited result in the end.
And I guess my point, oh, sorry, it was just that I think we need to do this, so I'm supportive of it, I'm just wondering, it could, rather than defer it totally, could we start working on it in a smaller way and a little bit more affordable, that's all.
And Councilmember Jackson, I think your questions are exactly why this is a very costly ask, is because this goes back and forth and definitions are written that comport with other cities, but this isn't just a pull this land use code off the shelf, this is fifty other jurisdictions land use code. The way this typically works is, we come up with a draft that complies with state code, we bring it to the council, and the Planning Commission, they give us, you know, on the west side, we only want half-acre lots, we're not comfortable with, you know, for example, last night, dog kennels in this area. All that stuff goes through and it's tailored, tailored to the city. It's, it's custom for us, and that's one of the reasons it's expensive.
With the business license fee, I'm curious with what you said, Chief, in relation to that. And when, if you said that's a cost that we could recoup in a few years, I'm curious to kind of explore that a little more. I don't like studies either, I like to avoid them as much as possible, but if that's something that we can recoup.
Sure. Well, and, I mean, you, you can call it an analysis, really, I mean, you know, what's a study? This would be an analysis of how much it actually costs and how much we should be charging.
How quickly would you say that?
So Holiday City put out their RFP in, in like, I think October, November, they're just kind of getting into their analysis. So there is, I will say, there's a handful of consultants in the state that do this work, and I think at least one that we've reached out to, they're, you know, like, hey, we won't be able to get to this for six months. So if we can pull this off internally, I think that's a great, a great option for us, but I do think that we are undercharging. And, and really, like, as a department head, right, what I wanna do is I wanna bring really good information to the city council that says, here's how much we're charging, this is how much is actually costing the city, we want you to make a policy, policy decision, again, especially with how hard it is to look at all of the needs and balance those needs. Do you wanna continue to undercharge and have the taxpayers subsidize, or do we wanna have the business license fees be supported by the businesses?
Yes.
And I think, and I think that would be the end result, right? I think, and, and whether our, our fees double, and they're very low, so even when I say they double, they go from sixty-five to a hundred and twenty dollars. You know, that's still a significant, a significant increase, and the taxpayers just aren't subsidizing that.
I would like to explore that a little more and not necessarily maybe move it out of the deferred items, just look at it. Because I do think our city needs to close some of these loopholes that we've dealt with for years.
I think what we're saying is that we're, we're intensifying.
We, we have a new, I submitted a fee schedule for us, I combined Leighton, Leighton's Syracuse and Farmington, what they're doing, and so Dean and we're in heaven.
I think what we're saying on the business license fee study is that we're willing to take that one on, the staff and the finance department for the next three months as, as we get Marin's replacement, we're, we're gonna tackle that and see how, how we do with that. So that's why we deferred it, because we're gonna take it on.
Okay, that makes sense.
We deferred it and we're gonna complete it internally. That's what the. Yeah, so, so we're hoping to do the work anyway, save the eighteen thousand dollars, but bring better information to the council. Sounds awesome.
Comfortable with that? I think this is outstanding discussion that's happening, just getting, having the department heads here has been great to get into more of this level of detail. We do have a ton of slides to get through and, and discussions, I wanna leave enough time, but also, I don't wanna cut it short. So if, if we cut today short, we can always plan more additional meetings if, because I, again, I don't wanna cut discussion short, I think it's, it's really healthy and informative, so.
Just skip the police department?
Hey, if you wanna.
Long as it's, long as it's a party.
We can skip the RDA.
Five, five, five less police officers.
We'll still have to do traffic, you know?
All right, so you pulled over, don't. Gee, you're up.
Good babe.
And we're off. So for the police, we really didn't increase much. You know, our personnel, which is the biggest part of our budget, went up, I think about three-hundred thousand dollars. And that's not a, a cost we can really control. Most of the costs for the police department are just kind of built in, like our software, that's where we saw our biggest increases. And that, you know, our software costs going up is just not something we can control, and we're really beholden a lot to technology in the police department. A couple of things, you'll see, we, ammunition, Taser replacements, some of those things have, have gone up drastically, and so we've added a little bit of money in for that. We can't get polygraphs done anymore, polygraphers are kind of going out of business, they're just kind of a lost art anymore, so we found a, a replacement for that. It's a, it's a one-time cost, that seven thousand dollars, that won't be ongoing. And we really only have asked for one new software program, it's about five thousand dollars, and that's gonna help us primarily do a reverse nine-one-one notification better than what we've got right now, because what we've got right now just doesn't work very well. We had some problems with it, seems like every time we use it, and we get a lot of complaints and, and sends notifications to places that it shouldn't be going, and a lot of people don't get notified. So we think we found a better solution, we've been testing it out for the last six months, and that's really the only software increase we've asked for. Some of these other things, we've deferred, a drone, I think would be very beneficial for our department, looking for, we get a lot of lost kids and dementia patients that wander away, I think it'd make us more efficient and effective on some of those, those things, as well as some high-risk operations, give us better intelligence and eyes on on some of those scenes. But we've deferred that, we've also deferred a shed that we were asking for at the bountiful range that we could put some of our training equipment in, so we're not hauling that back and forth every time we go to train. We've also, I feel like our fleet's in a pretty good spot this year, and so we're asking for three less vehicles than what we typically ask for. And in its place, though it won't, it, it will save money still, but we're just asking to replace our rifles and buy suppressors with those also, as well as that purchase of pole camera. It would be more of an overt surveillance system, so something that the public would recognize as a police camera. For things like when some of our, say, for instance, Vasa gets hit with vehicle burglaries and some of those businesses and customers have concerns, we could put that up and maybe help give them some peace of mind, help deter, and also help us do some surveillance. We've, we've got some other problematic businesses, like some massage parlors, illicit massage parlors, that would help us address some of those issues there too.
Is that pole camera, could that be used on July fourth?
Yes.
And you'll let us know if you put any cameras at said massage parlor.
It'll have, it'll, just stay away from those two, it's very overt, so.
I wanna see John walking in.
Yeah, it's got. But it does have, it does have blue lights that can be turned on, and it's pretty obvious what it is.
I can't wait to see the footage.
So our, we're asking for less in capital than we, we typically ask for, and. So our, we're asking for less in capital than we, we typically ask for and, uh, our increases.
Where are you putting the suppressors? Are they, like, the advantage of that is just?
Uh, well, it's a, the, the main advantage is going to be, uh, just hearing. So trying to mitigate any kind of, uh, hearing loss for our, our officers long-term.
This is on pistols, this is on the rifles.
This is just on rifles, yeah, yeah. So we take the, the precautions that we can, you know, we require air protection, things like that. But, um, that's been a, an area that police departments are, are being litigated is, is, um, at the end of an officer's career, the hearing loss that they've sustained. So I think this is, uh, something that'll help mitigate some of that. And we get a pretty good, um, we get a pretty good discount, a pretty good deal on that. I think this is a, a good deal, um, on this. It's the same rifles we've got. Some of the rifles we have right now are, are just twenty years old. They're great rifles, but they're starting to deteriorate. And I don't want to get to the point that we don't know that they're reliable in the field. So trying to get ahead of that.
Can you sell the old ones or?
We are, yep, yep. We're trading those in on these, uh, on these new ones, yep.
So Chief, I have a question about the drone.
Absolutely.
I know it's deferred, but like, if we were to decide not to defer it, or what, if we decide to move forward with it on another year, how often do you anticipate, like, deploying that? And then I feel like technology goes out like every two years. How long do you think that would last?
Uh, I, I think this drone would, could, could last five years or more. Um, we, we don't have a program right now, so I could only speak to what other agencies have done. But, um, some agencies have, have multiple drones and will use them, have one on every shift that they have an operator on, using it every shift. Particularly for areas, cities that are, that are larger and they have a harder time, uh, responding to, which our city's getting to that point. We go clear up on the mountain to very far west and we really haven't changed the number of, of patrol officers that we have in patrol in, in twenty years, that hasn't gone up much. And the traffic's gotten a lot harder, so it's harder to, to get to some of those areas. So I think, you know, I, I can't give you a great answer on how much we would use it. I, I think it's kind of like when we were talking about, uh, bringing on a, a city attorney full-time. You have an idea of what it would be like to have it available and, you know, and I think we've used Nick a lot more. I think this would just depend on the emphasis we put on it. You know, whether we, whether we really dedicate some time to it or whether we just kind of use it for, decide that it's going to be a reactive thing, then we're going to use it a lot less. If it's only for missing persons, we'll probably use it once or twice a month. If we use it for accidents or, you know, trying to get to one site, you know, if we're trying to, we're on the west side and we're trying to get somebody on the east side to see if there's something that's really a problem that's being reported, it can increase our response times and intelligence and maybe resolve matters without sending, sending cops all the way up there, so. Thanks.
The special supplies, how it's not, are, are those be, under operational costs because you are going to continue to buy those same supplies every year? Or?
Yeah. So like, I, I think it's referring to ammunition.
Ammo's just gone up and?
Yeah. Yeah, Taser replacements, uh, things like that.
The Taser replacement is in lieu of a polygraph.
Outstanding.
I want, I still, I do want to get tased.
We can do that.
Does it matter that I have a heart condition?
No, it's actually better.
As long as you sign a waiver.
One of our guys, this is the truth, one of our guys volunteered to get tased a couple of weeks ago and he hooked the monitor up on him. They wanted to see what happens to his heart when it gets tased and stuff. More power to you.
That's awesome. And hang, and hangover when he's like, not you fat Jesus.
That's a little bit IQ test, right?
Like, no thanks, I'm out.
All right, and we're off. Yeah, we got it, we got about the same as Chief is saying, uh, about three hundred, uh, three eighty, whatever that number is. Uh, most of it on the operation side. And, and you know, uh, Dean, what did it come out to be? We're asking for a thirteen percent increase. Is that about the right number? Uh, all of our costs in the past two years have gone up between ten and thirty-five percent. Um, and that's, that's not a joke number. It, it really is. Uh, just to give you an example on P P E, uh, a few years ago, P P E was about for, to outfit a brand-new firefighter, him, her, doesn't matter, uh, about four grand. It's sixty-eight twelve now, sixty-eight hundred dollars. And that's ridiculous. Uh, boots have gone up this past year from five sixty-five to six twenty now, just things like that. Um, if you see, if you see in there on the right-hand side, labor costs. So I asked our, our folks that work on our vehicles, uh, I said, hey, man, give me your labor costs. They've gone up thirty-five percent since twenty-three, from one seventy-one fifty an hour to two twenty-one fifty an hour. That is absolutely crazy. Um, I went over to Young, they, they fixed my lights, my flashing lights on my grill. Uh, they, I say they hooked us up and they did. They didn't charge me for any parts or anything like that, but their shop rate's a hundred and eighty-five bucks. And unfortunately, our mechanics can't work on our vehicles to do in-depth stuff. You have to be certified to work on our vehicles, so we do have to send them out. So we spent on a calendar year, cause I track it, um, and I could do it fiscal year, but I don't think it really matters. Uh, we track all of our vehicle costs and that's not the cost when our, our mechanics change oil and stuff like that. We're not, we're not putting that into the mix. But we spent about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars last year just on vehicles. We took an engine in, nothing wrong with the engine. We do annual maintenance every July. That's why you see a big spike in our two fifty account, um, right away. Uh, we get our safety checks on our vehicles and our, uh, and our, uh, annual maintenance. Thirty-eight thousand dollars on annual maintenance for a vehicle that was nothing wrong with it. Twenty-five thousand dollars in labor. So that's, that's where a lot of our stuff is coming from. We don't have any wiggle room this year in our budget. We're, we're asking, you know, just for the, the minimum. And that's the unfortunate side is if something does happen, if something breaks, and I know that's an if, but in my world, you know, two is one and one is none, uh, we have to have that equipment. Any question? I, you know, and unfortunately, I'll say it out loud, we are high-paid insurance policy. I get it. That's who we are.
We're grateful to have you.
Well, thank you, man. I was hoping John would say something like that, but he didn't.
I may say in a minute.
He was getting there. It's a slower process.
Uh, we're deferring, as you can see in there. Uh, you've heard me complain about it and, and it's a need, but I, I really believe this and, and we are a team and we're, we're, we are close. Uh, I need a deputy, but I, I think we need, I think Nick needs that, so, is what it is. Uh, something has to fall off the truck, I say that often. So we're the only city, uh, not represented in emergency management, cause I stopped doing it. So we're the only city in Davis County that doesn't have a representation at the table. L A P C meetings, E M meetings once a month, so we're going to have to address that somewhere.
Does it have to be a professionally trained person?
No, cause I'm not an emergency manager.
Okay, I was just going to say, is that something that you could have a council member go do? Or does it need to be someone in the profession? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Like, like Syracuse, they have, they have one of their detectives do it. Somebody else has somebody from Public Works do it, you know? So it's, it's not like everybody is certified, so I don't want to sell that wrong message, but it's just having that representation. Cause there's a, Amber is a pretty proactive gal. She's our, uh, Davis County Emergency Manager. She came from the state a couple of years ago, um, and she's good at what she does. And she's trying to, you know, get programs back up and running that has fell off for the county, so. The only thing I can see, nobody's threatening us whatsoever, but if we don't move forward with something like that or at least get a representative, go ahead and have a natural disaster and see how they're going to help us out, you know?
Yeah, that scares me.
It, it does, you know? We've had a couple wind things, we've had a couple of things going on. And like I said, nobody's threatened us, but if, if you don't provide somebody at the table, you know, they're going to go, huh, well. Okay, now Caseville needs us, so you got to think about that too.
For sure.
Is there anyone on city staff that could maybe start filling that?
I, you know, it's, it's like everybody else, man. Everybody has so many hats they're wearing. I mean.
New city attorney.
Amber Reed.
Yeah. Yeah, the new city attorney.
Well, and you, you know. It doesn't have to be somebody that's in police or fire. Jobs, in fact, there's advantages to.
Yeah.
To not.
I would, I would, I would pick somebody that at least knows that.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
Any questions? We could get some money back from a city that's using us.
Maybe if we send a bill.
Any, any questions?
Josh?
All right, here we go. So th- this graph looks a little bit different than, uh, quite a few other people's. Uh, as you're looking at operating costs on the left. Um, what you're seeing there is just the very nature of the general fund in Public Works. General Fund in Public Works is just the Streets Department. And it's just a, a small portion of the Streets Department. Um, the General Fund covers things like street signs, road salt, uh, purchasing snowplows, purchasing streets equipment, um, wages and benefits, office supplies, et cetera, so. With what we have in streets, it's largely, uh, dynamic. It's reactionary, you know, replacing signs when there's accidents. Um, it's weather dependent, uh, with, with, uh, snow in the winter. Uh, that's why you see that drop, uh, from the high there, you see, uh, twenty-twenty-three, uh, heavy snow year. This, this year's been, uh, very mild. So we're, we're, we're sometimes budgeting higher than what we end up spending. And, and sometimes if it's a, a really bad year, we're going to be spending more than, than we budgeted, so. A lot of variability there. And increase in fuel costs, uh, vehicle repairs. I think, uh, we've seen, like, anywhere from twenty to thirty-five percent increase in, uh, vehicle repair costs year over year for the last five or so years. So, yeah, can we go to the next one there? Yeah. Uh, so fuel is a huge part of, of our vehicle repair budget item, um, in addition to the actual repairs. Sidewalk repairs, uh, we are, uh, looking at, you know, or do we shift from the general fund to, uh, the, the road fund? Uh, and, and see that as a more appropriate home for those kinds of costs, so. Yeah. Not a whole lot here, but.
Question, the two hundred K deferred item, how did you get up, how did you get to that number?
Um, so the two hundred.
That was just part of the, um, strategy meeting we had on February fourth, where Mike brought up, you know, can the city do more for sidewalks? Two hundred, it's just a number.
It's a number, it's a number the farming could move.
Yeah, farming to use it, South Weaver uses it, um, so we could pick any number for that, if that's something you guys want to put in the budget.
Well, I can say personally, from having a family member severely injured by that issue.
Yeah.
I would much rather see our sidewalks fixed, because as I have talked to people, I have mentioned what had happened to me, my family member. I've had so many other people say to me, and I know Nate's had in his neighborhood, people say, yeah, I fell. I've talked to other people, said, yeah, I tripped and fell and on the, and there's been a lot of injuries. To me, that's a big deal, that there are people getting injured in our city and we are not doing anything about it. I mean, I'm not saying we're not doing anything, but it should be a priority. Um, and I know in a neighboring city, if there's ever a complaint of somebody who is injured, it immediately goes to the top of the list and is immediately fixed. But, so I, I didn't used to think this was as big a deal as it is until I've learned more and had a, a personal issue with it. So obviously it is a little bit more on my radar, but to see it just completely deferred out for two hundred thousand. See, in my mind, I'm trying to say, work on a, work on a zoning ordinance or get your sidewalks fixed so people don't get hurt. That doesn't even weigh out the same to me at all, um, as, as, as me looking out, out looking in. To me, the one doesn't even matter, cause it, people don't really get hurt by it. This one they do, but yet it's become a lower priority. I, you know, this is where I get a little frustrated.
I would like to see, maybe not two hundred thousand, but I would like to see more money put into sidewalk repair than we've traditionally had. Um, just even next to my house, I don't know what happened, but suddenly two areas of sidewalk are now almost three inches. And nothing is, I don't know what happened, it's just wild. And I live over here and, um, I just think the city needs to put more money into that.
Yeah, so we. We've increased the budget from that, uh, I think in twenty-two, we had a budget of thirty thousand. Um, and we've increased it this year, the request, I think, is seventy-five thousand.
The current budget is thirty-five, current year, we're recommending twenty-six, forty-five thousand.
On, correct. And that, that's on top of, uh, in the road fund, um, uh, in capital costs for improvements. I think I've got additional funds, uh, in there.
For sidewalks.
For that as well, yeah, sidewalk curb, uh, concrete repairs, so. And as, as we talked about in the strategic planning meeting, um, I, I, I think it's a very worthy effort to look at considering, you know, are, do we look at changing ordinance and changing the approach that the city takes currently? The ordinance is very clear that sidewalk repair is the responsibility of the homeowner. Is, is that the best way to do it? I, I don't know that it is.
Yeah.
So this fee here, is that, that is shaving, right?
Correct, yeah. So right now, our, our minor, um, work is concrete cutting. Uh, each of those cuts costs about three hundred, four hundred dollars a piece, just for one single cut that you do. And, and we're able to get a, a couple of city blocks done.
When you say a cut, is that a, you cut it out and report it?
No, just, you, you have a lip, you've come to it and you shave that lip off.
And how does that work now? Can people just call and request?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take calls from the public throughout the year. Um, if it's something minor that can be cut, there's limitations because of ADA. Um, if, if it can't be cut, then we'll work with the homeowner. This is going to have to be replaced rather than just a cut. Uh, if it is just a cut, we'll put it on the list. We're able to get that contractor in once a year. It's about every October, November. And we'll give them a list and say, here's the amount of money that we have, go as far as you can and, until we run out.
One thing I worry about, if you're taking any money from road funds, then it's just kind of like, you may get to it, you may not, depending on funding. And I would like the sidewalk repair funding to be very clear-cut.
It is, it's its own line item within the road fund budget, yeah, just all by itself. Um, that way it's, it's not being cannibalized by anything else, like you're saying. Uh, so in.
Seventy-five thousand or?
Uh, yeah. So in, in addition to the minor cutting, what we end up seeing is, um, situations where, hey, it can't be cut, it's got to be replaced, uh, we work with the homeowner. Um, the ordinance identifies that the city will participate in some of the reimbursement costs. And so we say, hey, get your contractor in, uh, bring the, like, demolished concrete down. They can dump it for free at the Public Works yard. Uh, and then, uh, get an invoice after that's done and we're able to reimburse a portion of those costs. And and then, uh, get an invoice after that's done, and we're able to reimburse a portion of those costs. A lot of the difficulty is, you know, depending on, hey, I found this random contractor that's, you know, fifty-five dollars per foot, and we've got a contractor over here that can do it for, you know, thirty-one dollars per foot. So there's, there's difficulty there, but just trying to, uh, keep a list where we can keep moving on that, I think we were able to knock out two and a half years' worth of concrete repairs as people have called in within the last seven months, eight months, so. Definitely a backlog. Uh, it used to be fifteen dollars a foot, it's now, uh, forty.
A few years ago, twenty-five.
Yeah, in twenty, twenty eighteen, when we were getting ready for big projects on Sunset and Shepherd, installing a new sidewalk, it was uh, fifteen dollars a foot, we're now at forty-one dollars a foot for sidewalk.
Gee.
So, yeah.
Would they, could they just?
And and in addition to that, so, a- as Mike mentioned, we've, we've got places where people are are getting injured. And 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 we can bump those up to the top of the list, and the two contractors that we have available. W- when did Carrie end up getting hurt?
It was back on October thirty-first, and it's still there, I looked.
We're still waiting for the contractor.
See, that's my issue right there.
Yeah, we need to, we need to be more robust, whether we find a new contractor.
Yes.
That, that is the best contractor, that's Tim Yarbro, the, the finest contractor we worked with in terms of concrete. His, his schedule, uh, and and other C K C that we've worked with, we're, we're still waiting.
I wonder, uh, this is just spitballing, 'cause I don't know how often we're getting these complaints, but I wonder if there's like a, I swear, like, there's like an attachment that you can put to a, a hammer drill. It almost looks like a, like a thing for mashing potatoes. Where the guy had told me, like, it's not a pretty fix, but it's like, it takes down, 'cause I had shown him, and he's like, oh, yeah, you could buy this for your hammer drill.
It's called a, a bushing.
A bushing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and and when I looked at it, I'm like, how does that work? And he's like, trust me, it works, watch a YouTube video, whatever. I just, I mean, this is just a thought, but like, for example, like, situation, he's saying that that wouldn't fix, that that it needs to be replaced. But if once we get a call, and I know staff's tough, but like, you say, like, hey, guys, will you just run over and take fifteen minutes and mash that thing up so it's not?
Yeah, the, the, the difficult, so typically when you use a bushing, you're gonna use that in an application where I'm going to be pouring something on top of that, you know, because you've got a a roughed surface with exposed aggregate that is more susceptible to to chipping. Uh, and and just the impact from that, depending on how deep you're going, uh, the the vibration from that, you can weaken portions of the sidewalk and cause other cracking. The amount of time that it would take to to use a bushing to remove two inches of concrete, 'cause you've gotta go, uh, for every quarter inch, you've gotta go one foot back horizontal. Uh, that'd take you.
So it's not just, uh, quickly.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Uh, we, we've, we've tried using damosaws ourselves, trying to get in at an angle, and it, it's a good way to to cut your hand off.
Well, there's also the slip resistant, those specialized saws. If the surface is too smooth, then you create a slip issue as well, so it's.
Be textured.
It has to have.
Yeah, it is textured somewhat.
Specialized tool that.
So. Uh, uh, we, we, we recognize the, you know, it's, it's kind of ridiculous. Uh, the, the amount of issues that there are. Um, and and the amount of time that it takes to make some repairs, some of the repairs that we finished last year. Like I said, that was a backlog of almost three years, being able to get out and and go after it. Yeah, but tha- that's why I think it's incredibly worthy of, like, hey, tha- that's gonna, that's gonna be a significant cost increase to the city and impact on staff time, but how realistic is it to have ordinances that say that sidewalk is the resident's responsibility? Um, but I, I don't think it's incredibly realistic, we've been talking with Nick about this over the last year. From a liability perspective and logistics, it, it might make sense to to make a major change there as much as, uh, that'd be difficult to do. And and shift more of that responsibility of the city, so.
How, how hard does that money go? Like, if there's seventy-five thousand for sidewalk repair?
Uh, it, it, it depends, like I was saying, contractor rates vary, so you could have neighbor A who gets contractor at forty to fifty dollars a foot. And neighbor B is half of that. And what we reimburse can can vary. Uh, even the cost of the cut, if you've got a two-inch cut, that's gonna be like four hundred and fifty dollars versus a, a one-inch cut is gonna be around two hundred and fifty dollars, so it, it all just depends on the severity and and the extent of what we're having to do and.
Doesn't the city get better pricing than a, a resident would get?
That's, yeah, that's city pricing.
Oh, that is city pricing. Gosh, that's crazy.
So, we, we've had residents that, that own, like, business, commercial properties, reach out to the same contractor, and they're anywhere from, like, three hundred and seventy-five dollars up to five hundred dollars, about fifty per cut, so we're, we're certainly getting a volume discount there, but.
So Jason, is this the kind of meeting where we would s- I mean, we've talked about this, and I feel like there's some support for taking some of this out of the deferred, are we doing that in this meeting, or are we gonna do that in another meeting?
No, this is definitely the meeting to make those kind of comments, just give feedback about if, if there's an interest in, you know, changing some of these recommendations, definitely let's talk about those.
'Cause I would definitely then be interested in maybe taking, like, half and putting it back in, or or s- or some sort of doing something instead of just taking out like a full two hundred thousand, like, put a little bit back in, I don't know. But I'd love to see what we could do.
Start making a wedge as we go through this, start making a wedge and finish up, let us know.
So far, this is the one that I've noted, or probably high priority, that we're gonna go back and. Yeah. Figure out how to do it, maybe, of course. Yeah, it all comes back to, we can reevaluate, alright, what are we looking at for, uh, fund balance? Can we maybe pull some of these, any items out of fund balance, or do we look at, you know, maybe upping that truth in taxation number a little teeny bit, or, um, but, yeah, I think once we get through all of it, though, we can go back and figure out, alright, now, wh- where do things kinda fall out in terms of priority, we get a, we're getting a pretty good sense through these conversations, so.
Well, and Abby and I were talking about it, you know, where's, where then, as you're looking, we've, we've heard from other departments already on what they're deferring. Where should the, where does the staff believe the priority is on, say, this versus something the chief over can, that he's referring, you know?
Right.
Which do you, as a staff, believe is a higher priority? 'Cause I think that, we, I would want to know that, you know, that I'm not picking something just because it's my pet rock.
Right. I think, I always look at things through the lens of safety, being like, that's an obvious, you know, priority. And and this, if this is like one of the only things that comes out of this meeting, is it, let's pull something out of deferred stuff and put it back in, and this is, this is it, then, I mean, that's, that's relatively easier to do than, yeah. And so far, I feel like we're doing pretty well on, in terms of, I guess, I'm getting a sense of agreement on most things as we go through this, but. Perfect, this is a good one to, to take a hard look at. Staffing recommendations, we talked about this, but these are just net neutral adjustments in terms of total full-time employees, we're eliminating one locator position and power. Um, one of the two locators we have, and then, uh, adding a maintenance worker three for water. Um, and then the meter tech, when Bruce Rigby retires in July, as our resource service manager in power, we're gonna not backfill that position. Those dudes will be dispersed and we'll hire a meter tech, and I don't, we've talked about this before, but in case Brian or Josh wants to add any, or any questions on that.
I, I have one question, just, um, so, I know the fluoride go past. Does that free up any staff time on your end, or is that just?
No, fluoride is all at the Weber Basin level right now.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Because we purchase all of our water, we don't do any fluoridating.
Maintain, maintain that, okay.
Good question.
Alright, road fund? Or, yeah?
Roadhouse fund.
Uh, yeah, uh, road fund here, you can see, we've got a, uh, grant from the Davis County Third Quarter Option, uh, that Dexter was able to se- to secure for Two Hundred North, uh, for three million. And, so that, those, those funds are only eligible to reimburse road costs. Uh, we've obviously got a lot of utility work on that project, and those, those funds aren't eligible for reimbursement with that, so. And we'll, we'll continue this upcoming fiscal year on, uh, our current big projects, which are Mutton Hollow and Two Hundred North for construction. Uh, and, uh, other project of note is continuing design, uh, with Crestwood, uh, getting some of the feedback from council this last year. And we've re-engaged the consultant, uh, back in early March to continue that project, so. I hope to have that design done and kind of put that project on the shelf until we feel we're, we're ready to to go after that in terms of construction, so. Um, yeah, I don't know if there's, uh, any, any questions here on this?
I don't have questions, but just a comment, we, we do appreciate as residents seeing the work being done.
It's, it's not done as, as fast as we'd like it, you know, I'd love to be doing more
But that's okay.
Roads each year, but we're, you know, we're, we're seeing an improvement in, in our, what's called R S L, remaining service life of of our road network. And the recommendation from LTAP and APWA is you want the R S L average of no less than ten, when we started the road utility, we were at nine point two, we're now up to, like, twelve point one. So we're, we're seeing improvements, but, um, it's, it's not as quickly as residents would like to see, and I, I think we feel the same way, it just we, we would love to move faster, but it's, it's moving.
But, but it's progress, and people know that, eventually, it'll be amazing, so.
Yeah, on- once we're able to get bigger projects out of the way, I think that's where people will start to see more impact to themselves in neighborhoods, being able to do neighborhood streets, so.
Yeah, I agree, thanks.
Best for last, right? So this is parks, parks, recreation, cemetery, community events, and then buildings, facilities. Uh, that's our department, uh, operating costs, slight increase capital. Cost, you see the Y's on both of those. Operating costs, pretty much, it's, uh, we got a lot of stuff that's aging, so aging asphalt in our parking lots. Uh, we don't have the skill set within our department anymore, uh, to do some, some of the pruning of our trees, so there's a lot more contract out for pruning trees that are bigger and more.
Robust.
Robust, that, that we just don't have the skill set, I would think, staff to, uh, put people up in trees at a certain height. Uh, part of the Y in our operation cost, too, is we feel a responsibility to be water conscious, that's our use of irrigation and water. We have a project that we keep putting off year after year. We'd like to start a fire station by, uh, zero escaping the, uh, the park trips around the building, just to, uh, start with our park. Uh, water conservation, we live in the desert. And then, and another Y was, uh, community banners, this is, this came out of the February fourth meeting, I just, what are some things that we can do to let people know that, hey, this is K'sville? And the banners, I think, have been in this no man's land where there hasn't anybody that's really owned them. As far as, so we're proposing that we own the community banners, and let's put some new ones up. Let's, uh, start doing some branding. We do allow the power department to put them up, but, uh, we would be, you know, responsible for big treaty housing, something like that, capital costs.
I'll say.
Sorry, just on, on those, there are three big ones there, the commission garden, cemetery, restroom locking doors. Um, that's system-wide, it's not just one restroom.
That's what I was wondering. That's a, that's a expensive lot. I'll, I'll install it, I'll YouTube it.
It's about fifteen hundred per door.
Okay.
We're starting to see a lot of issues, uh, after hours. Um, we, we're getting some houseless people that are, uh, s- spending the night in our restrooms, uh, now, and so. Uh, just trying to do our part to do that. And then, Barnes, the Tower Concrete, that piggybacks on kind of Josh and the sidewalk. The tower, we see, you know, hundreds of thousands of people there a year. Our concrete's aging, we're starting to get issues with trip hazards, our steps unequal. Step to the height ratio, and so that's just, uh, there's just a lot of concrete around the tower. Uh, there's, that's, that's the upstairs. This kind of explains a little bit, maybe in detail, per, per division, what the, what the cost of the, the new parking lots. We have deferred, um, purchase of turf renovation machine that helps make level, and just. One of the things that might be to note is that that number would probably be significantly higher, but this year, a lot of, some of our projects, uh, went through ramp, which that, that could be debatable, whether that should be a ramp, or that should be a, an operational cost. Um, but looking at the, the landscape, some of those things that had needed to happen, uh, went through ramp. Anyway, so that number would've been a little bit higher, but ramp, uh, is funding some of the projects that would've typically come, come through, or just our parks operating, uh, costs. And then, cemetery perpetual care. Uh, the perpetual care money is, that's the money that's just reserved for the ongoing, not ongoing, but the perpetual maintenance of the cemetery, so those are restricted funds that can only be used for projects in the cemetery. I, we'll just highlight that the current budget year, we budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, cemetery irrigation replacement, that's coming in, all said and done, it'll be about six hundred thousand.
Good.
So, that, that money will just remain in the perpetual care, contractor's been awesome up there, they should finish next week. And then ramp, so, ramp board met on Wednesday night, uh, and these are the accurate recommendations that the board forwarded to the budget process. So, some of those things, um, deposit parts of ordinary model, and the Barnes Park, uh, Tower Restroom model, those are items that could be argued that should be possibly just operational costs versus a ramp funded. And, and those were approved.
But, but Cole, you know, and if, if the community had had more projects come in, they were asking.
Agree.
These would've fallen off.
Agree.
But the only other option would be to do this operationally and put the extra ramp money in the, maybe the K's with Junior High, but.
Yeah.
This seems like.
That's the question, I think.
Yeah, I.
And that's a question, too, going forward, you should ramp, you know, as we look at the, the Junior High gymnasium, should we set an annual amount, that ramp is going to contribute to that, and that's a fixed amount, and then ramp then divest out what's left of our revenue. Our, our projected revenue collection with ramps is about five hundred and forty thousand a year, plus or minus, so. So anything that is above the expenditures, um, that fund balance automatically gets set aside for the gymnasium.
So, when you had your ramp meeting, was your committee in agreement to these?
Yeah.
That sounds like a.
Exactly.
Great, great thing, man.
Yeah. It's just one of those questions you fundamentally used to ask, you know, is it ramped, is it, should it be park operations cost on some of these, but the board at the end of the day, everybody was very supportive of it, so, it was a, it was a good process. So everything that was requested got funded with the exception of two uh two items, and those were, they just didn't meet the requirements, so.
Do you mind telling us what they were?
What, the ones that didn't get funded? So one was from the Historic Preservation Commission for some plaques, for some historical markers. The reason that didn't get funded is they were awarded that same fund two cycles ago, and they still haven't put them up, so it's like, put them, put the ones you've already got funded for up before we go to the next one.
Yep.
And then the other one is Mercy Housing, Francis uh.
Francis View.
Francis Peak.
Francis Peak.
Applied for two grants, one was a program grant which did get funded, the other one was a a help with their playground equipment. The ramp doesn't fund facilities that are not owned by the city, and because it was a playground, it's not owned by the city, it didn't meet the qualifications. But everything else got funded, there was one other one that didn't get funded its full amount, which is the, maybe that's a good one to highlight, is the Historic District in Kaysville, Old Town Kaysville. Ramp is going to fund the street signs, they'll be kind of brown colored, it'll say Kaysville City Historic District on those, so. The proposal was to do street signs, the the street posts as well, but there was some a lot of questions with that, so ramp just decided to fund just the signs that would mount to the existing poles, and Josh and Public Works are supportive of that.
Ken's following it?
Yes.
Well, and just to clarify for anyone who might be listening, the funds for the for the projects for the city like Barnes Park, that is allowed?
Yes.
It is, it is a legal use of ramp money.
It is. Anything, any facility that is owned by Kaysville City is eligible for for ramp funds, it's just a question you ask yourself, is it a?
Is this the best project?
Is this the best project for ramp, but as Councilman Oakes said, these were the only projects that were applied for this year, so.
The legal expenditure funds, it's a policy question.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, that's another way to say it. I think that's the last one slide. Any questions?
Some of this is yours, Cole, you want to talk about the Trail and Quail Crossing?
Yeah, so the Trail Enhancement, that was in FY twenty eight, it's sliding into FY twenty six, that's the the money that we would receive from UDOT for the West Davis Corridor Trail Enhancement. Still trying to work out some of the details, some of the corpses, some of the areas technically are not in Kaysville City limits on the West Davis Corridor, so trying to figure out some of that, or technically not in the city, should it be, yeah, except it's not in our city boundary. And then probably is the Quail Crossing, nine fifty west, Quail Crossing Park, nine fifty west, the where the new parking lot is, that triangle piece, and then just trying to enhance that park as well as the streetscape even on Sunset as well as nine fifty there. So that's the request, and that's for an engineering consultant, design firms to help us come up with a plan that we can beautify the streetscape. And I think, yeah. And of course, then the deferred items that fall under our facilities, most of them are the op center expansion, we're currently in a design phase right now, so we'll fin it, we'll complete that and then put a pin in it. The library project, same thing, Trappers Field, same thing, it's all been designed, it's just the price tag to complete is what it is, so.
We got the price tag back on the library project?
No, that's just kind of our initial estimates based on stuff, I think that's something we'd like to have a discussion with the council, probably in a separate separate meeting, is Jason and I met with a contractor yesterday, just trying to come up, think outside the box on some ways to to restore it that may be different, still restore it, but what does that look like and how can we do that in a cost effective way and still make it usable? So it's probably a discussion we need to have specific to that building where we can get into a lot more detail on, you know, as we talk about it, what is the most important thing of that?
Well, and I I'd like to reiterate, if you, on these deferred items, for me, the Kaysville Junior High Gym is absolutely my number one priority in the deferred.
And that's our, I'll be selfish from the department, that's ours, too.
It seems to be the most impactful to the citizens of Kaysville.
Yeah, and and it's a, and I I don't, maybe it doesn't fit in the deferred, I don't know that that's where it.
Just deferred because of the amount to be determined?
It's to be determined, yeah, to be determined.
I guess I thought the county was moving forward with it.
They are, they are, and that's why this is our one time, this is our shot, if we're going to do it, it's now. If it was completely on our timeline, it probably would be an automatic defer.
Do we have to sign something saying that we're going to contribute, or can we just like kind of allude to it and then once they're done with it be like?
So we're working with the county right now with the school district on those, so.
We'll have to do something.
We have to commit to, yeah.
Not yet, we should, we should have a better idea towards the end of this month, first of May.
But shouldn't that be something that is included in the budget, because are we not going to have to come up with some funds in twenty twenty six? There's a couple of things happening, one, we don't have a number yet, but the also we don't have a timeline quite yet either, so we know, so I reached out to the school district the other day just to propose something, said, hey, look, we don't have whatever it's going to be, seven, eight million dollars right now to give you, would you be willing to take, for example, you know, a certain portion of our ramp money for the next twenty years until it's paid off? And their response to that was basically not, probably not, because they're they're going to bond for this as well, and there's interest that they have to pay. And so I I, we're going to meet the week after next just just to see what might be possible, because also at play here is they want to take the Catalyst Center and do some kind of an amphitheater, and they're probably going to need some of our Barnes Park land, we don't know exactly how much yet, but that might play into the discussion, too, where we say, hey, we'll give you some of this land in exchange for you give us a break on the gymnasium perhaps. Dean did run some numbers on if we had to bond for the library, let's just say we had to bond for six million, we were able to come up with the rest of it. Didn't say, oh, sorry.
Say library.
Thank you, not not library, gym, but if we came up with six million for the gym, how much would it cost to, you know, for the debt service, and it was like, what, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, Dean?
Four hundred and twenty.
A year for twenty years at three and a half percent interest? So, you know, potentially, we could take four hundred and twenty thousand out of out ramp, that would severely limit our ability to do anything else with ramp for the next twenty years, but there are options, and that's just a discussion we'll have to have, you know, in the coming weeks when we get more information on what it's actually going to cost and what the school district is open to.
And the school district is willing to to work with us, and so they're motivated to, there's just a lot of moving pieces to it right this second.
So as of right now, the school district already has the bond for this, correct?
Yes.
They they don't have to, they're already, they're already funded for it.
Yeah, they've already got the funding for it.
So their plans are, my was to be under construction in twenty twenty six, so are we going to have to have some money available for them in twenty twenty six?
It depends on, depends on, the way I understand it, if, whenever it opens is when the city would.
Would start.
Would start, so it it may be that it's not until twenty seven.
And I know with West Point, they're finishing up their gym projects, and that's this summer, and then I think their first payment's due this fall.
Yeah.
Although, I will say this, too, when they responded to my email the other day, they said, you know, they're planning to break ground this fall on the gym, as early as this fall, and then the first payment from us would be due next spring of twenty twenty six. And then another payment due sometime between twenty six, twenty seven, and the final of three payments due in the fall of twenty twenty seven. So again, that's just kind of what they said would be typical, but we'll meet in a couple of weeks and get a better sense of what they're willing to do.
So, okay. Because it sounds to me like there's a possibility we need to include a number in the twenty twenty six budget, unless they're willing to wait till July first of twenty twenty six.
Yes, you're you're right, so.
We're hoping to get more information so when it comes time to adopt the tentative budget.
You can have that included.
That number in there.
Right, thank you.
Yes, and we are, and we do have some ramp funds, the fund balance that's been dedicated for this in the previous three cycles, so there is.
How much, like six hundred grand?
I think it's like seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty something.
Is uh, is there any chance the the money that we've accumulated for the Smiths?
Oh, RDA money?
The RDA money from Smiths, that we could use that towards towards the gym, I mean, it's, no?
We we directed the money to urban development and downtown enhancement projects.
Well, what if we put, I mean, it's enhancing downtown because people exercise there, if we put like. If we put vending machines in there, then there's economic benefit to it.
One one thing about the RDA is the school district.
Indoor track.
Yeah, the indoor track, yeah.
They are asking now to do even more pencil sharpening on, you know, the ROI on these things, so when we go back eventually with the CRA, they're going to want to see, hey, how does this benefit us, show us that there is actually return on our investment, and so things like the library, gym are really going to be a really tough sell, because they're not generating really any additional property tax for.
Yeah.
It's just the school district.
It's really not supposed to be intended for publicly owned facilities and buildings and property. It's.
Whatever. So more to come in the next few weeks, but the gym is definitely one of our priorities, we'll just plug in more information as we get it in the coming years. Now the best part.
Do we take a break first?
Oh, yeah, we've got probably another forty five minutes of discussion, well, but yeah, this would be a good time for a live ten minute break, great, unless anyone wants to just keep going.
Can we show my video? Yeah, I emailed it to you.
Are you kidding?
No. Or just show it, or just, or just show it at the end.
Hey, Brian.
Or just, or just show it at the end.
You could have got out of this meeting. They gave me the option. Team player.
I I love sending that to people, like, I saved that one and then I have this one that I also send to people. Like I'm trying to put up a fence or something.
Shoot, it's funny. Uh, me, I I told Andy the other day that we just had a great conversation, and once again, I really appreciate.
I need to get it to Ross closer.
Yeah, um, and then, anyway, I just, I just, I got it just.
He's cool on addition to a competition. Like, yes, we both.
Yeah.
We have a long, and then we have a little section that's.
That's reaction one.
Trying to justify selling, because they use those numbers to justify selling that way, because they eat another station and they're in grants, but they use that hard stuff, they have to.
What, what, they back? Oh, really?
Yeah, so, but that's what's going to suck, is our stuff is going to grow up, because they plan on closing that move as a third remodel, so when that happens, they'll be even further, you're going to be way closer.
You're doing all the hard work.
Congratulations last night.
Hey, thank you. Sixteen. I'm offended.
Crazy, yeah, no, that's that's, I feel like there's a lot more period.
I did, I said I'm offended, I said I'm offended.
Baseball.
You really killed me with baseball, I can't even get, they don't have a second game. So you even fly to trade, I I didn't hear a lot of statistics this year, I was doing this for the first year.
There's a luxury tax, but not a not an actual salary.
Yeah. The Dodgers.
There was the whole money involved, like with the big A's where they figured out a way to do it, cheaper, but I can't look up any statisticians, that's what I'm doing. I went to this meeting when I was in San Francisco, the city manager's meeting, the guest speaker was the president of the city department, and he came in, this is like, it was the year that the Cardinals lost the series. Yeah, but it was like, they were like way, I don't know, even getting played, and they kind of come out with all the statistics, and they're like, my God, and they calculated our honest meaning of the game, and this is like, you tell you like, we have like, you know, there's one out of a thousand chance of making a play, it's just crazy like that, and sure enough, that was the year that we were not going to win, and they made us play out of great, and we were playing some serious, like, good matches.
And that's all, it wasn't actually. The reason to watch, it's a matter of, watching the year, it's a, it's a better chance. See, I kind of changed the, I changed the picture. It's what I told them, it's just, it's incredible how much data you call, and it should, because it's. But I just, I mean, it just don't like the fact, I like the fact that with the anchill you have a soundtrack, so you have to fit with your brand, that's why you have the second, third, fourth lines, they're such, that's true, and a perfect example is, for instance, when all just the large salts, the stamp codes, the best players, they're on a bunch of them. Did you do your update chart? Did you get that latest statement? Six foot two, dude, so it's been there. That really, I'm trying to. Never seen, even mentioned the last night, the game, when I watched it, I said, I said, look at, because, uh, she were playing the Fred. And he says, look at this team that's. Not really a good place. It just goes to show you how important that, very important. Well, you know, they want. You don't have to count yourself. So, about, when the Lightning took, during COVID, when the Lightning took, um, Stanley Cup. They, uh, had one of their. This is the play, the first, in the season after the century. Yet, uh, last thirty days. Yeah, there's a lot of.
You can't do that to yourself, right? That'll damage your mental health.
I know, wow.
Yeah, if you, if you were a bracket, to go with the number one, you'd do that really good. I, uh, still. I think, I think it creates. I was doing really well in the brackets until it got to eight. And then that's when all the no shots were there, and I didn't have. I took absolute laughs.
They have put these reasons in there, it would be.
Just catches some, I, I would rather just say, instead of a million, fine, let's just go for two.
It's, uh.
Raise it, we have to submit that we need to do.
Yeah. It's one environment like that.
Get our sidewalks fixed, and then, and then next year, let's just hit eighty plays, and then get our, we just.
If you're continuing playing the catch-up game, you're hundred percent. Next year, you're playing with last year's Bravo.
And for some.
You're always, you're always, they get given. That's a, that's a. And I, I think staff recognizes that as well, like, there's been a lot of. I, I've been talking about sidewalks and several things, like, I don't like that a lot of the. I don't like that, you know, there's possible sidewalks and it's waiting for everyone. Cold, and, 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 we don't love that, the entrances to the city, the way that they. But like, cheap, I, I, this is added.
All right, let's go.
Yes, A grades with B wages. B five resources.
Did you do a sleeper?
And it restores confidence in the city.
And then you, you go around.
It really does, like, people, the way they feel is largely based off of what they see.
Yes, and you're like, then you go, wow, this is Kaysville, and I, it looks very different than another community next to us, like, that is awesome.
I think one to two hundred.
There's community pride inherent. With that, it comes, there's a cost, so.
And they need to see it, and it's roads, and banner, I mean, it's little things sometimes that really. I was talking to Larry Veach last weekend, we were now in St. George, so we went vibrating. He said, Tammy, I'm freaking scared about your, your waterways. Josh is freaking really worried on that, he said, you should be very, very afraid. And I said, we are.
I don't think. And Mike, and, and right, so Mike has a lot of concerns about the tosser road, I think, throughout the city. Compared to what you've got under.
We are moving on the air, we're against.
I don't think anybody in any city is made of a quick day. Yeah, right, applications, deck, so it's like, all the teams, they're going out like. Name focus. Yeah. It's, it's overwhelming. Right now, submitted, project says to the state. How many times will go with that, if you ever hold state funding, or state, or state. I must, I don't think, I don't really like the YEDD, because I made it was. That's why I don't go with. I, they showed the Utah hockey, like, the Utah. Realistically, the one that, the one that, the, 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 the. The Outlaws, like, if I looked at all my. I'd say. Then the city's been, the city's been.
Actually, I don't like.
Cities like. Now it's, 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 it's. This entire whole. So basically, for Davis High and all the way. Funny, because it was just, they, from mainstream, when they came to Big Tom. It's like, that makes sense, but Utah, it's been a lot of sense. Those, I saw that story, like, some people had a $2,000 change of admission.
Now we can't afford it next year.
So if, if you take that as an example, uh, what can you expect? In terms of how long it'll take, that's a two-year.
Good, it's time, yeah, I guess.
I think every.
I like the.
Street, that the mayor's gonna have the first pitch.
When?
Oh, my gosh.
June tenth?
You guys, I cannot.
June tenth?
I cannot throw a ball.
I don't care, June tenth, where?
I cannot throw a ball.
Raptors game, June tenth, I'm going.
I'm, I'm scared.
You need a brat coming?
I, no, I told my father-in-law who plays that ball, I said, I cannot embarrass him, he said.
You're the first pitch?
Yeah, June tenth.
Josh, Josh, I can't throw a ball.
Hey.
I can't bounce a ball, I'm so scared.
We, we need to put that on social media.
You, Dexter was a college baseball player.
Wait, he really was, okay, you guys, I really cannot. I'm not.
He, he didn't end up going, but.
We'll drink a forty.
Yeah.
No, I'm scared, I'm, I'm scared.
You got this. Mayor.
I'm getting.
I'm gonna sick Dexter.
Can I mention one thing really quick? We're just talking about it here, but the mayor is throwing out the first pitch of the Raptors game on June tenth.
Really? That's June tenth?
So, a little league, uh, baseball, we're switching over, instead of being a junior bee, we're switching to the junior rafters. Um, and she's throwing out the ceremonial first pitch on June tenth.
Yeah, and I'm.
Ed Lindquist field in August.
I gotta put that.
I'm very scared, and you should all be scared.
Don't embarrass. Ball can only go halfway.
It sure goes all the way to the catcher.
My, my father-in-law, the grand, I said, you've gotta show me how to throw a ball, he goes, oh, Tammy, how much time do we have? I said, it's in June, he goes, that's, that's.
Go watch the sandlot, it's, I don't know about how to, it's like a paper.
Oh, maybe because I have a paper.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Um, all right, so we're gonna get into health insurance and compensation real quick, or not quick, I don't know, see? But next slide, this is, uh, you, you heard that we had a twenty-five percent increase, proposed increase from University of Utah Health Plans, um, and our broker went and marketed our plan. And I guess back up a little bit, just looking at this history, you can see we've had pretty decent, uh, rate increases over the years, up until the last, you know, this year in, in, well, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and that's just simply a result of our claims, that's all. Um, we've had some, what they call shot claims, um, with some, uh, terminal, or, uh, sorry, not.
Tragic.
Just tragic, yeah, uh, high expense claims, and, so, that's not a complete surprise to see that go up. Um, we didn't have all of our claims experience at this point last year, we knew there were more coming, and so they have a bigger one this year, it just wasn't a complete surprise to us. Twenty-five percent was, was certainly a lot, but again, um, GSB, GBS, our broker, uh, marketed our plan out, and, we got responses from three other, uh, plans, Cigna, P E H P, and United Healthcare. And then there were at least five or six that completely declined to even bid because we were considered high risk, or just they couldn't be competitive, and, and that, again, is a result of our claims, they can see that, you know, our, our claims experience. So, uh, we are opting, or we are suggesting we go with University of Utah, keep University of Utah Health Plans, they, they propose a sixteen percent increase here. Um, they weren't the lowest, actually, we actually had P E H P come in a couple percent lower than, than, uh, University of Utah, and I think Dean did the math, and it would be like, about a sixty thousand dollars savings annually if we went with, uh, with P E H P. Uh, and that's on a three point one, two million dollar cost, so this isn't, um, is that about right, three point?
Then the pharmacy benefit wasn't quite as good either.
Oh, that's right, the pharmacy, so it wasn't quite apples to apples, going to P E H P, um, would have been a less, slightly less of a benefit. And it, and it's a big move, but, but more importantly than that, and we've kinda strategized with our broker the other day on this. I think our claims experience, we think our claims experience is going to change over the coming, you know, year. And next year, we wanna market this again, and we think we're, we're gonna get a lot better rates, hopefully next year. And our thought is on this, is you don't wanna move around every year with this stuff, because if you get a reputation that you're just gonna move every year, little bit, or whatever, you, you tend to get less aggressive, um, responses, so, sometimes the, um, um, what's the word, the, not adjusters, but the. Yeah, who are the nerds that do the math? The underwriters, thank you. They'll, that's, that's a, an honor to be called that, by the way. They, they'll start to just not get really interested or competitive, and then just throw out a whatever rate, so we thought, rather than move to say P H P this year, and then again, market next year, and then realize, oh, let's jump again, with that, let's stick with U of U, and let's market again next year and see what we get, and then maybe next year make the move if, if there's a significantly better, uh, option. But again, we're really happy that we got, um, U of U down to sixteen percent from twenty-five, but that's still competitive compared to the other offers we got. And, uh, especially considering the situation we're in, they, they've stuck with us, and I think they're looking at long-term here. And knowing that this is just kind of a, maybe a blip for us, that we're having a high claims, uh, couple of years. So that's our recommendation, is that we keep, stay with U of U, market again next year. We did, uh, do some research, Kim did, our HR manager, on our plan design, to see if maybe there's some adjustments we could do. She did some surveys of other cities, and really, we're right, right in the mix, um, in terms of, like, you look up in the top box there, the city right now pays eighty-five percent of the premium. There are cities out there that pay ninety, a hundred percent, there are cities that pay eighty percent, but eighty-five is kinda right where we think we need to be, in terms of being, you know, competitive. Um, we looked at other things too, like, we've got two plans, we have a traditional plan, that's your typical, uh, you pay your co-pay, whatever, and then we have the high deductible plan, um, employees can choose from, but we don't really see any opportunity for major savings anywhere else by doing plan design changes, so, um, unless we start to cut away in, at our ability to be competitive with other cities and what they're offering. So, well, we're thinking, let's take of our, our, care of our employees that we have, and keep our, our benefit, stick with U of U, and then again, next year, market this out, and hopefully get, uh, you know, some better results with maybe different claims than we have right now. So any questions on health insurance?
I have one question on it, just, uh, I, I know that P E H P, which is the Public Employees Health Plan, work directly with U R S. Seems like that would be, and it's less, seems like that would be kind of a good transition, working with the health provider that works directly with your Utah retirement system. Is there, is there no advantage to that? I mean, it's less money, it seems like, and I know from past experience, when I had PJ, P H P before we changed, it seemed like it was a lot easier to work with them, because they're local, you're not dealing with somebody elsewhere, I, I'm just asking if it's, if, it seems like the two work really well together, and, uh, I don't. Did you ever have the U of U? I have, I have it now. What's that? I have it now. Oh, okay, no, I was just wondering, like, if, if they noticed any difference switching to U of U. I just didn't know why, I mean, I, you know, where your Public Employees Health Plan and works, you know, they work really close with the U R S, I think they're in the same office.
Um, you know, to, to make the switch is, is pretty, uh, significant, uh, impact on our employees. And we're wondering if the cost savings is enough to, to merit that switch.
Okay.
We think on a marketing perspective, as Jason was explaining, that it's maybe better to wait in here, we think P H P is a good option, great option. But if our claims history goes down like we think it might, I think they'll be even more competitive next year. So we, we think from a marketing perspective, it's probably best to, to lessen the impact on our employees, and wait till next year and see what, see what happens.
Are, are the employees', uh, costs going up as well? For their, part of the insurance?
Yeah, about sixteen percent, uh, the employees are paying fifteen percent of that increase, so, a family plan will pay about fifty dollar a month more for the employee under this cost share allocation, so yes, they are going up for the employee.
I don't, I don't love that, I don't even.
I don't either.
Uh, I. Well, I mean, I get it, my, my insurance goes up, I work for a corporation where the insurance goes up, so, but, but, at the same time, I don't, I don't know that the, I don't know that the share should be one percent to fifteen percent.
Yeah, I, I think you can look at it a couple different ways, is, uh, change the cost share allocation, or when it comes to look at, uh, looking at the cost of living, make sure you take that in consideration when you recognize there's an increase in health insurance costs.
Which would be more preferable?
I think for the employee, it would be the cost share.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh.
For the employee, it'd be the what?
The cost share allocation.
Change it to ninety, ten, or something.
Changes ninety, ten.
To what?
To ninety, ten.
I mean, if I was in a. You're saying you're giving them?
Cost, cost share allocation run up there. Right now, the city pays eighty-five, half the city paid ninety percent.
So I think there's, hold on, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. So that sixteen percent, that's what's going up overall, but the, the city employees aren't going to take fifteen of that sixteen percent. That's just, they're still going to pay eighty-five percent, but it's just that overall increase of the sixteen percent that goes up.
I know, I, oh, I know, I, I see what you're saying. I'm just trying to figure out like if, if we went to, if we went to ninety-
Ninety, ten?
Ninety, ten, what type of diff- I'd like to see what kind of difference that would make, like as far as how much that increases health insurance.
Is it fifty dollars a paycheck or fifty dollars a month?
A month.
A month.
Per family plan.
Yeah, so everybody's would go up, the city share, the employee share, everyone pays sixteen percent more. I mean, this is such a tough decision. Discussion because, yeah, it's tough on employees, right? That's why we have COLA. But it's also so hard to sustain this benefit. Health insurance is just going out of sight. There, you know, the, I read something the other day about just there's no end in sight to, you know, right? So-
As a joke.
That seems like going the wrong way. And with, you're going, if you went to ninety, you know, ninety, ten, I understand that because you're going totally opposite of where most corporations are doing it across the country.
Yeah, but that's what, that's, I think that's what, I guess what I would say is that I believe the appeal of working for the government is, is like maybe that you're, that those things cost less. And I don't know, maybe you could get, you could tell me, how much is a family plan per month, do you know roughly? Like is it five hundred dollars or?
For the employee?
Employee with family?
Go from three twenty-five to three seventy-seven.
A payday?
A payday.
No, a month.
No.
Oh, a month?
A month.
One fifty per year.
No, it's, yeah, it's a great deal. And I, and again, I think they should bear some of the burden of it, of it going up, but I'm just saying like maybe fifty dollars more.
Too, John, I mean, I think it, I think the plan that they get anymore is a high deductible plan.
The family plan? Even, even the one that's like whatever, you still have a pretty high deductibles?
I think it's, isn't it forty-five hundred dollars per family?
No.
Six.
Six thousand.
Three, six, six.
Does the city pay any of that to help, I mean, like for our employees, we do. We, three thousand dollar deductible, we cover the second fifteen hundred.
Oh, wow.
They cover the first fifteen, we cover the second.
That's cool.
We contribute to THSA. Yeah.
So he does contribute to HSA.
Okay, okay.
Oh, you guys have to, you do have HSA going.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
It's a total throughout the year.
Maybe you see what it cost, what it would cost to Dean to switch it to ninety, to ninety, so that they aren't paying fifty dollars more a month, maybe it's like twenty-five. Especially since like COLA is pretty much, we're doing a reverse COLA this year, only coming to city council.
Too soon for the-
I think it's important too just to look at, it, these are, like I said, hard conversations, but I, in terms of being competitive, I always like to look at what other cities are doing, whether that's compensation or that's, you know, insurance. And Kim again did the, the study, found that, you know, there's a lot of cities that are doing less than eighty-five percent. Some, a lot of eighties and some even less than eighty by a lot. Again, there's some that are doing ninety, a hundred percent, but, and I've, I've been doing this kind of stuff forever, you know, twenty years, eighty-five percent has been like surprisingly the number for, forever. In all the cities I've worked for, at least it's just funny how we've always found that eighty-five is that sweet spot. So for what that's worth, but I also think sometimes it's, it goes the other way in the benefit of the employees where we say, hey, you know what? If we want to stay at like that, whatever percentile of the market, we've got to raise, you know, our, our compensation. And in this case, it might hurt the employees a little bit by saying, hey, we're going to hold it eighty-five percent and they're going to share in the pain and we're going to share in eighty-five percent of the pain and they're going to share in fifteen percent of the pain. But we'll get to the next slides here in a second and say, hey, here's what we're proposing for merit and market in order to stay competitive. So for what that's worth again, but we'll look at the numbers and see what that cost is on the ninety, ten and-
Yeah, I wouldn't mind getting the numbers.
Again, everything we do here means if we spend more money, whether it's taking things off of the deferral list and putting them on the budget or we're going to spend more money somewhere else, we have to find a place to, where that comes from. So that's a, that's a difficult side.
This is kind of one of those things that for me, it's, it makes more sense to pay less in a merit because the costs are so varied from employee to employee. When you take two and a half percent of different salaries at here to here, or you say, we're going to cut down on the merit, treat everybody equally and pay a little more to their health insurance.
Well, let's take fifty, so you're talking-
Well, that's not equal because I don't even use the city's health insurance and not all the employees do.
Yeah, but you're probably the one person, maybe two or three that don't.
But let's do the calculation, let's do the calculation. So fifty thousand, say, let's average fifty thousand dollar a year. Say someone's making fifty thousand dollars a year times point five percent is two hundred and fifty dollars for a year divided by twelve would be twenty dollars.
But somebody who's making a hundred and fifty thousand a year is going to get-
It's always dangerous doing math in public.
Yeah, I know.
You understand what I'm saying though, because if we're talking, if we're, if instead of increasing health insurance, fifty dollars, we're only increasing at twenty-five dollars, then that, that person benefits from the health insurance over another half a percent merit. But you're right, once we start going up the scale.
Right, that's what I say, you go up the scale. When, when health insurance is a benefit the city provides.
But then you also have to realize you don't get taxed on health insurance.
Guess I'm not following you.
Do you?
Right now.
You don't get taxed on paying your health insurance, right? You don't get taxed on your health insurance?
On their contribution you made?
On their contribution to health insurance. So in some ways, it might be better to have the health insurance be more and get more merit. I'm trying to rationalize, like if you increase merit to compensate for health insurance going up, or if you-
Then it doesn't really help the person who's at the lower part.
I think they should-
You can't, you gotta be careful.
They gotta be two separate things.
Because merit is merit.
Yeah, they gotta be two separate things.
If you're talking COLA because-
COLA is what I was trying to talk about. COLA, I'm sorry, I was trying to talk about COLA. I apologize. No, COLA is what I'm talking about. And I guess maybe we should treat them as separate things.
Well, I think this is where we are right now.
Okay, thank you.
Run those numbers and give you that, that information, maybe some of the people on health insurance.
All right, so compensation, this is what we proposed or came out of the budget kickoff meeting several weeks ago. Two and a half percent market.
See, this, this, this confuses me, so you gotta help me out because I heard, I'd heard both chiefs say that their, that their wages have gone up about three hundred thousand this year from last year, so that would be six hundred thousand.
That's not my wages.
Okay.
It's operational costs, majority of them.
It's the total.
It's the total of operational costs.
Personnel expenditures. So if you look at the first page, they're talking about police department went up three thirty-one, fire went up four forty-one total for personnel expenditures. And then this is how it's split out.
Citywide.
Citywide. So the one point two five two, the one point two million is just general fund, but citywide is one point three.
That makes sense, Mike.
Probably not looking at the right papers.
You can see the personnel cost by department.
It's on the, it's on the other one, it's on the-
Yeah, the handout you were looking at. There's a-
First page.
First page, it says personnel expenditures.
Okay, got it.
So that's the-
And then by department and the two like orangish yellow, that's the tentative budget.
Says their increase from the prior year was three hundred and thirty-one on fire or police and four hundred and forty-one on fire.
Yes.
That's just personnel, right? Or is that total operation?
It's just personnel.
Personnel only.
So way-
So you did get a four hundred thousand increase this year over last year for personnel. That's what this is saying.
Yes.
Sure, that's what's included in the budget.
And is that included? Because this two point five citywide market adjustment is three hundred and twenty-six, so that's not-
You go down and look at the total, one point three. That's citywide compared to the one point two here, which is just general fund. So that one, one point two, essentially this is how it breaks out. COLA, merit, baseline adjustments, compensation.
So I, I guess I have to ask, why are, why are the police and fire so much more than all the other departments?
They have more personnel.
You have more employees.
I'm probably a third of the employees in the city at the police.
Okay.
Close to a third.
So you're like twenty-nine, thirty?
No, he's got thirty-five somewhere. I've got thirty-four sworn and three civilian positions. And then thirty, twenty-nine, thirty crossing guards.
And then I got twenty-three and then another seventeen.
Big numbers different.
Okay. But as we've talked about before, the, the two and a half percent, call it a market or call it a COLA, that, that really helps us just kind of keep pace with other cities. That's really what that's doing. So right now, we, we try to stay within about the, you know, middle, the average of, of our comparator cities. And as those other cities are doing their market adjustments or their COLA, we want to do the same so that we're, we're not losing ground on those cities and we're keeping kind of right in the middle of the pack about what we want to be. At least based on what we've, our practice has been with the last few years. The zero three percent merit, just as history, I guess, we were once on a STEP program, what, six, eight years ago? When did that change?
Five years ago.
Five years ago? And that was, steps were like five percent or so-ish.
Four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent. So five plus years ago, when we went from steps and everyone was getting the four and a half percent or so per year, we went to the merit, which was, has been typically three percent a year. It's functioned a lot like a STEP, but it's been three percent. Most employees get that merit as long as they're not topped out in their range unless their performance is, is not good. By and large, employees are getting that merit. We think this is important though, in terms of when we're presenting a pay plan to a new hire, for example, they want to know, hey, how, how long does it take me to get to the top of this range? And they can do that with every city they go to. Every city has got either a market or a STEP every year and they can kind of project out how long it's going to take them. So right now, with the, if we stick at a three percent merit like we've done most years, employees generally get to the top of their range in roughly, what, ten years or so. Our ranges, our, our range bands are thirty-five percent apart, so you can kind of estimate the math there if you get a three percent merit every year.
So this would be a hard question to ask, but I want to ask, since we have all the department heads in here, if you hire a new employee, the employee goes to all the other employees and says, hey, tell me about this merit increase. And they say, oh, don't worry, you get, you get the three percent every year. What, then what, like, you know what I mean? It loses it, it sort of loses-
That's not the case in my department.
I, I thought, I, I thought when we ran the numbers that like ninety-
We budget for that, but department heads don't have discretion whether to give it.
We've asked for that like year after year to see like what actu- the actuals of what people got, and I feel like we haven't ever-
More than eighty-five percent of the full merit.
More than eighty-five. So like even though you budget for ninety, at least it's more than eighty-five, that's pretty-
Budget for a-
So if you guys are saying that that's not the case, like I would just, that, you know, I think it's just, I think it's tough because it's a tough culture to break because the second you start giving the guys two or one, they're going to be pissed and start looking for a job because they've gotten used to getting three. And I also agree that probably you have really good employees, so it's hard to like say like, oh, I love all my employees, so I'm going to give them, I'm going to give them all three.
You know what's tougher?
What?
Is explaining to your employees that our goal is five percent below average. That's tougher.
Our goal?
That's our goal, to put your wage at five percent below average.
Oh.
That's, that's a tough thing to swallow. You know, doing my math, average is seventy percent, so we're asking them to do sixty-five percent of the job. That's the way I figure it. When your goal is a city not to even be average and be competitive, that's hard to swallow.
Who, who of our guys are under five though?
Well, that's part of the conversation study we do each year.
Yeah. Yeah, where we wanted to bring everybody to at least-
Median.
We talked in the last meeting about slowly moving above that. I said something about that in the last meeting, about slowly moving above the five percent below now that we've mostly gotten there.
How many of the, how many of the fire guys are under five? Under zero?
Out of the twenty-three full timers, nineteen.
Nineteen of her under?
Under average. Under average.
Under zero, but-
Well, fire, fire had a unique situation this year. They, they're competing against a lot of other fire agencies that, that raised salaries. And so when you look at that compensation study, adjusting positions more than five percent, most of that is going to the fire department to bring them within five percent. Not within average, but within five percent of average.
Yeah, but, but chief, you're getting upset, but you haven't come to us and said, hey, pay my guy, I gotta pay my guys more.
Yes, it is.
When?
Every year. Every year, every year.
For the budget? I haven't, I didn't see it in this presentation at all. When you presented, did you, did you ask for more pay for your guys?
So our, our policy's been for-
Where was this in the presentation today?
It wasn't because they were us.
So what, every year?
So that's a policy question, as much as it is a budget question. The policy or practice has been that we bring our people within five percent of average. Some, some people are above average. But if you, if, because the market moves, if your position follows, falls below five percent of average, then we move you up to five percent of average.
We showed that information in February when we had that first meeting.
What, what we had, and we had everybody was within our five percent. He's disgruntled because he thinks five percent isn't fair.
He's saying every, telling people that they're going to be below average at least five percent.
I thought though, when we, we approved money last year to make sure everybody was within five percent.
That's, no, no, what he's saying, we did, but what he's saying is that is cruel.
I think-
Is that what you're saying?
Well, because you're trying for blind predictions.
Right, right.
So it's great discussion, but Emery's going to have to write minutes for this, so let's just try to all speak.
Sorry.
Or Emery's going to have to-
I'm glad you said that, thank you. She told me to say that.
Write, write minutes for this, so if we could just all kind of speak one at a time, that'd be helpful for her.
And I, I feel this isn't a separate slide or to be in my slides. This is part of it. That's why I'm speaking right now. But we're, we're down as far as pay. That's why Syracuse got their guys and gals last year, got a fifteen to twenty-eight percent pay raise last year. And they do a study every two years. Same comparable city, same comparable size, responses. We're, we're thirty-three, they're thirty-four population wise-ish.
And to go to your point, John, about when it's hard to not give a merit increase or the full merit increase, I don't have, I never have a hard time telling an employee, you don't deserve this, or I don't think your performance meets this. But where it does get hard is if you're underpaid or the raises are lower than another city and then you're dinging them for this, that, that's when it gets hard as a department head to tell a person you're not getting this merit. Because if the merit and the COLA are already less than what they're seeing in other cities, it's a, you know, it's hitting them twice kind of thing.
I have a comment on the merit and then the COLA. First of all, the merit, one of the, so first of all, yeah, you, employees are looking at this and saying, how long is it going to take me to get to the top of the range? A lot of cities have steps, some have merit. Very, very few, in my experience, have true merit. We call it a merit, but I, I, yeah, it's true that most of the employees are going to get that unless their performance is really, really awful. The problem if you do a true merit is we don't make widgets, we don't have sales, like you can't just point to a number and say, okay, you're going to get a two and a half percent, you're only going to get a one and a half percent. It's all very super subjective data that they're being rated on. You know, how well are you doing your job as a police officer? You can't, or a firefighter or, or an accountant or whatever. It's almost impossible to really say in an objective way that this is what you're going to get because of this level of performance.
Well, it could be just like, I, I agree. I think that it's hard and it could probably open us up to lawsuits because it's like, yeah, well, this, he obviously just doesn't like me because I got two percent, but he gave this other guy three and, and that guy, just because they like to, you know, kick back and have a beer together or whatever.
Can be a morale nightmare sometimes. If we were in, you know-
But I guess what I'm just saying is I almost wonder why we even call it merit when we really don't seem to use, I mean, the whole, I, I feel like the whole point of calling it merit is that that's like something that people will think like, gosh, I got to really do good at my job or I'm not going to get this increase.
I think it's, it's somewhere in between. It's not like a true merit, what I would consider true merit, but I also like the mentality that employees don't just assume no matter what, it's a given. Like it, the idea that you're learning in your job, that you're growing and that, yeah, if your performance is really bad, you won't get your merit and there's cases when that happens. But I, I do like the approach that we're going to sit down in an annual evaluation and evaluate your performance and give you some feedback and some of the employees growing some of the employees growing in their job, learning things, new skills, becoming more valuable to the city, then they get that, that increase. Um, as far as the COLA, I-
Can I ask one more question just before? So, is it legal for us to, or for Chief to, to say, like, I wanna raise these four guys' salary, because I feel like they are above-average guys? And these guys, I'm fine leaving at five percent below, because they're good, but they're not, they haven't get, given me, like, if they left, I could replace them, type of thing.
Dean has given me that flexibility as long as I stay within the range. But if that particular range doesn't go up, eh, you know, it's, eh, you're gonna have a compression sooner or later. And that's what you don't want.
I know, but I, but you, oh, you, you're saying as long as he stays within the five percent, or can he get up to the zero?
The pay range.
The pay range.
There's a minimum and maximum for every position.
The city council includes a pay range for that position.
And what you're saying is, there's a possibility that the pay range still falls under the five percent?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And, but, but I guess that's what I mean. I guess I, like, if we got into the nitty-gritty of it, it'd be nice.
Pay range, not individual pay.
And when we say, uh, market, like, where we stand in the market, five percent below or within five percent of average, we're basing that off of the maximum, the top end of the ranges. And our pay bands are thirty-five percent wide, so we look at, all right, where does our, top of our range need to be to be at average or within five percent of average? And then, starting salary is just a, a function of that, thirty-five percent below, whatever that max pay is.
It, it would probably be fairly impossible for us and any city to get all of their employees over, over that average amount, because that, it's constantly moving, right? Like, each city's, it's tit-for-tat back and forth, and so you'd have to be just the highest-paying city every year to keep your-
Fire, fire was a good example. I think last year, we were pretty much within five percent.
We were.
You know, for probably ninety-five percent of your guys.
Lot of, lot of-
All of a sudden, this year, we're down ten, twelve percent.
Lot of cities got some good pay raises last year.
Eh, you'll hear this conversation down at the league conference in St. George next week about-
I was gonna say, we got beat up at the league last year because of the raises we did give some of our employees. Um, they came back, I don't know if any other council members got this, but I did.
Yeah, we got hammered.
They came and says, we've had to do this because Caseville did this, and that made us have to do this, so that, and it's, and so I look at them like, well, we were told we were way under, and they says, no, you guys went so far that you've made it, so we've had to change all of our stuff to be competitive with you guys. That's the word and feedback we got at the Utah League. I don't know. I got some, I mean, I got that sitting in the tables.
I'm saying that's not true. The thing is, say that to you, but that is not true generally.
I think you were sitting with me, uh, at one of those places, weren't you?
Which city?
Something similar, where he wasn't-
So, I don't, I don't remember.
Probably. I, I think, you know, that's usually our, our problem. We, there's other cities out there that are really being aggressive. Um, but when we're saying we're kind of going for, you know, within five percent of average, that's typically not what we're getting accused of. And I don't know if people are hearing, it's Caseville, maybe they're getting confused, and it's actually Syracuse or somebody else, but, um-
Like I said, what you're getting told at those, sitting at a table, having a break, you don't know half if it's true or not, you just-
I do, I do have one position that is in the top three of the state, and that's our, our captain paramedics. They are in the top three in the state.
But, so I guess, Dean, would it be too hard to, and, and does it not make accounting sense for you to look at this, uh, like, more in-depth of, like, if you increase this? Cause when you increase this, say you increased it, the pay range to a certain amount, you guys end up budgeting for that amount, right? But, but if you actually knew how many of his folks he was actually going to hand or give those raises to, can you budget that instead and show us that number?
We, we've budgeted three percent merit across the board for all of them.
I know, but what I'm saying is, like, I'm just dealing with-
Actuals.
Red, red face over here. Eh, that, that, like, with the firefighter, you know, if there's nineteen guys that are under, we have to, if we increase it, you're saying we have to budget as if we've given all those nineteen people that increase to bring them up, right? Because you budget it at the max amount.
We've done that in the compensation study.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Or does that make sense? When you bu-
Yeah, we, we budget for the compensation, right, the, to get them five percent below market, and then we budget for the three percent. If you want us to work with Chief early and talk to him about who's actually getting that three percent.
So that we could see the actual number, yeah, it'd be interesting. Does that not a way that you wanna do?
But, I wanna make this clear, though. This is not about me or the department. I'm just a piece. We have a lot of people in this city that are five percent below average, and I think that's wrong.
We have a lot of people that are now dropped five, below five percent?
I think that's our pay plan, isn't it? That's our, that's our city strategy.
That's, that's, the understanding is, that's the benchmark, that they're below five. We don't wanna be the highest, we don't wanna be the lowest, we wanna be five percent below the average.
Within five percent of average.
The time when we, the time when we did that five, though, it was because that was like, it was painful to get it to that. But, if you're saying we need to have it that percentage different.
Below five, that's to get everybody at least five, five to zero. But if you're asking, how many people are between five and zero?
And what that cost is. Yeah, that's what I'd be curious.
Like, that's not shown here because of what our payment is.
Yeah, how many people fall below that five to zero and what?
Below, below average?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what is, what's rational? Do you guys think we need to be at zero? Perry's being really quiet. Abby, do you think we need to be at zero? Nate, do you think we need to be at zero?
I thought we need to be at zero, or, or above for a while.
Mayor, what do you think?
I think you're always right, John.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying-
Don't get in that car, Blanche. This is crazy stuff.
Do you think, do you think we should be at zero?
Um, no, I think that, personally, what do I think? I think that Caseville has an expectation as residents that we have the superior, we have quality, we have superior, we're the best. I think that we should be above average. I really do personally think, because that's our expectation level, but I also understand the reality of being above average. But every time we move that average, it will change the next year, because we don't know what every city's gonna do. I always ask the mayors, we've got a great message, who's gonna do truth and taxation, what's your raise? They don't know, cause they're having conversations like we are. You know, and so it's really hard to say, okay, as compared to them, we're all just having conversations about it. What did they actually do, looking back? I don't know everybody, eh, I don't know.
But do you think we should be at zero?
No.
What should we be?
I think that we should be above average.
Wait, so we, but we should set our range that everybody should be, that we shouldn't have anybody fall below zero? That's what I'm asking.
When you say below zero, you mean below average?
Right now, right now, we have our, right now, our thing, our code, or whatever we've said, is that we don't want anybody to fall below five percent of average. What, what, that's our, five percent is our, is our benchmark. Do you want us to move our benchmark to one percent above average?
And John, we, we did the five percent below because we were so far behind. It was, there was a bridge too far to go above that.
I get it. We did that, and, and we, and we did less COLA, and used, instead of doing more COLA, we did less, so that we could pay to bring some of those-
To get folks up there.
People that were below, which, again, I'm totally open to doing. I think that's a fantastic option to look at. If we're looking at COLA, do we do less COLA, but spend that money to bring all of the people that are under five percent up to zero?
And you're not talking, pe- then you're not talking people, you're talking ranges. You're talking positions.
That's fine, but-
Am, am I not, am I, no, you're right, you're right.
But do we bring that, do we do less COLA, use that money?
I think it's a similar discussion to, like, as we've been talking strategic plan, where is it that we want to end up? And I, I think the approach that, that Dean has been working on the last several years of, hey, let's, let's try and get up to this point. Eh, I, I think it'd be good to identify, like, that, that's not where we wanna remain forever. Eh, as Perry pointed out, like, how, how do we catch up? Like, what, what can we palate? Eh, I, I guess the question then becomes, all right, as we're getting every position to within five percent below average, where do we then go after that? Syracuse, um, I think they've said, eh, they're, they've established a benchmark of, we always wanna try and be within the top four, or something like that. Of, and, and, and they're doing that every other year, evaluating that, because it is a constantly-moving target.
Yeah, look, you work at Syracuse, too.
See, that's where you hear so many different things. Last I talked with Levi, worked for Syracuse, or talking with his wife towards it, their model was to be seventy-five percent of average. So, it is such a moving target. That's what I'm saying.
But why don't we focus on-
This was established by them, I think, two years ago, and, and has been reflected in two years of very significant changes, getting on that track of, this is where we're heading, this is what we know we're always gonna be shooting for. And that doesn't mean that you can't have a, a down year where, like, hey, that's what we were shooting for, but this year it's not going to work. But I think where Chief is coming from is, it's, it's hard to acknowledge and tell our people that you guys do exceptional, above-average work. And I, I, I very much believe that that's the case. And then, acknowledge, unfortunately, that their pay is average, or for the, the some positions, below average. Um, that, that's not to say that we have a lot of people that are ungrateful for the ability to work here, but that's hard when you see what other cities are doing. Eh, I, I think the most, like, educated municipal individuals are city employees, because they are constantly watching what other people are doing. Eh, we do have amazing people. I think the, the fact that we have merit increases, the full merit increase going to eighty-five percent of people is a testament to the quality of people that we have.
Right, yeah.
Um, we do have individuals that aren't getting the full three, and you'll see over time that the, the people that are regularly not getting the full three are people that eventually aren't working for Caseville anymore. Um, so I, I, I echo what, what Chief says of, I don't think Caseville needs to be in the, the top four, but I, I think it would be good to establish a goal that we are shooting for every year that acknowledges, you guys do above-average work, and we appreciate what you do, eh, and-
And when you, when you say, when you do that, when you set that bar that high, then if you have people that are performing at five percent below average, you know, then there's a huge justification to, no, that's not our, that's not our standard. So, we don't have to keep you, cause we're not desperate for you.
Right.
And you don't have to stay if you're not happy here. Because we are gonna, our bar is here, and our expectation's here, so I, I think that it, it matches better.
But I think my question is, what, what, let's make a decision. Do we want to change that to-
And move towards it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, do we, do we want to say that our new, our new goal is to not have anybody, anybody fall below zero? Or that, you, you're saying you want them above average? Do you want them to be, to not have anybody below one?
I think everyone's, we ought to be on least average, right?
That would be twenty-nine more people.
And-
As part of the, the budget process, there's a cost associated. There's a cost. That's what we gotta figure, that's what we need to understand. We're trying to do, is we're trying to get there gradually, and, and sometimes we get hit with an anomaly, like this year's the fire department.
And I think that's, I guess that's why I was trying to say, like, if there's a way for us to, to change it to zero, but, but at least somehow know how much it's really gonna cost us, because maybe not all of those people are. Like, to Tammy's point, maybe not all of those people fall within the director's purview of being somebody that is above average. And maybe they would all. Maybe everybody would get the, get the bump.
But we, we classify it like a position, not like individual.
Well, could we just, I mean, could we get more information on what this would cost, but also maybe what it would cost to move everyone to two percent below this year, and then, you know, whatever pers- and then zero next year? It just, it's probably gonna be, did you say there were twenty-nine, or how many are below? Like, if we can-
Well, there's sixty-four total below zero.
Okay.
Of ninety-four classified positions, sixty-four of those are below zero. At the last market study meeting.
That's gonna be a hot.
Like, if we could move them up just a little bit at a time per year until we get there.
You just won't ever get there, that's part of the problem.
Realize this always, all comes at cost, and right now, with, with what they're presenting, right now, today, you're looking at a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-year increase in their taxes, just for the Caseville City portion.
Right. I just, I feel like all of our tax things every year have been, we're gonna raise it, and then we're gonna have to raise it again, and again, and again, like, I'm not saying we have to bite the bullet on this, but I think there's some things we need to bite the bullet on, and if we need to raise taxes more than we've been proposed today, I'm not in love with that idea. But I wanna take care of business, like, I want, I wanna get things done.
These guys come in with high numbers anyway, just to, just to-
We promised we didn't do that this year.
Well, we know, there's been a lot of work on this.
It's my first time, I wouldn't have.
John, that is not true.
Next year, not this year.
I will say this, though. Okay, there's been a ton of work on this. There's been a lot of pain to get to this point. Um, but I also, I think we have a challenge in being sustainable. I mean, look at these cost increases we're seeing. Just to, just to tread water, we're looking at a twenty-six percent increase.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, is the sustainability of continuing to do. I mean, this is a painful tax increase, and, like you're saying, it still might not even, I mean, we might sink again next year.
And we're still using almost a million of fund balance.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and I don't think, like, if you think this is tough, wait till next year, cause I don't think revenues are gonna do anything good in this economy, and the tariffs are gonna hit hard, too.
Which, which I will say is a good justification, in my opinion, to always have a standard that we do truth and taxation. We do it every year. What, what that looks like and how much is yet to be determined, but we need to maintain, we need to be able to keep up, otherwise, we are in a hole. And we knew we would be, because we deferred it for the last, what, four years? You know, making big decisions, and we still have huge capital projects that we are gonna have a huge funding yet for. So, I think the expectation in the city, I live here, we've got family that live here, everyone does, is that this is our level of expectation, and in order to meet that level, we need to be honest and transparent about the costs. And the only way to really do that is by having these truth and taxation conversations, and letting people know, this is actually the cost. Yeah, we've got fund balance, and it's great, but we've taken from it every single year, at least that I've been on council. And that's six years, so, that's, I don't, I, it's like turning in your receipts for a, an organization. You might wanna also turn in a check to pay for that, but you need to let people know what the actual costs are. And just saying, we're, we're taking it from savings, I don't think is a true way of demonstrating what it's actually costing to run the business, run the company, run this, run this.
And we gotta get into enterprise funds next meeting and look at rate increases to sustain, you know, those activities as well, so. Yeah, like I said, I, hopefully, we did disappoint here. It's, it's a tough year. Um, it'll be a tough year, I'm sure, next year, too. Um, in the department head meeting, I said it's a perfect storm, and I think Nick said, yeah, every year's a perfect storm. He's right.
It's getting stronger, and we know it would. We, I remember having these conversations a couple of years ago, going, well, it's not raining yet. Well, it's going to rain. And it, we've seen it continue to rain harder, so we think we need to get on top of it.
I, I know we need to get on top of it, but I'm still sitting here trying to figure out how we're, we're going to ask every household who I know are struggling right now, to come up with two-hundred-and-fifty dollars more a year, right now?
Yep.
I, I, that, that's a, that may be easy for some of you, but there's no such thing as billable hours at Caseville City. It's called a tax increase.
Yeah, it is.
And it's hard for me, really hard.
And I think everyone, as we look at our households, we cut back. I know we're cutting subscription. I mean, we have to make sacrifices. But I think in order to be the best service that we've been elected to do, we need to be transparent with what things are costing, and just let people know. This is, this is what it is, and be willing to make hard decisions, because if we don't, we're gonna have a bigger problem next year, and then, and the following years, and so. But Mike, I totally understand where you're coming from. I'm not saying that there's money trees in anyone's backyard.
I don't think it's easy for anybody, staff, elected officials, residents, and I don't think any of us take that lightly as we put our budgets together. Uh, the, these don't have fluff of, man, this would sure be a neat program to start and put video game pods all over the break rooms or, and it, it's, they're, they're very bare-bones, what we bring. Um, but the, you, the costs of things go up and, and we either have to find a way to pay for those things or we cut back on what we do. You know, we, we, we provide fewer services or we don't have those services go as far or or we find a way to, to pay for those things.
And Mike, I know you know this, but we have the same families that you're talking about. They work for us. They're struggling, just like the families anywhere else, you know?
That's a, this is a crappy dichotomy we get put into every year. I hate the budget.
I, I think, well, the numbers have been rough, you know? Um, the process, I think, has been good, and I'm, I'm really pleased with the efforts of everybody, the department heads and Brennan and Dean, just doing a lot of work here to, to come up with something that, that is feasible. We'll, we'll come back with, uh, it's the feedback that you've given us today. We'll, we'll kinda go back and crunch numbers and bring back more information next meeting, but the next meeting will especially be focusing on the enterprise funds again, so. Uh, looking forward to showing those Waterworth models that, uh, we, we got into this year, that those will kinda show us the long-term projections of keeping our power and water functioning well.
We're looking forward to a really long presentation by Brian. Lot of talking, lot of information, lot of PowerPoint.
We went from development, we don't wanna hear from Brian.
You have it, though? Everybody, this is how, this is how we should all feel after.
Maybe, we'll see.
Preview, cause if it's from John.
It's fine, it's good.
Is that you?
Well, that might have been me.
Or no?
Pretty funny.
Okay.
Here we go.
Here you go.
This is how I feel. This is how I feel about the budget. And today.